So we're gonna have to somehow make this work. We're gonna have to either sit or stand along the outer areas. There is an overflow option in the hearing room. However, we don't have audio in there. And I understand everybody wants to be seen and heard. So it's either along the outer parts.
Recording in progress.
Outer parts or in the hallway, please. But we definitely don't want to violate our fire code and our room maximum attendance. Thank you. When you're ready, let me know. All right. Good evening. We, uh... Call to order. The City of Franklin Common Council Meeting. It's Tuesday, May 7th at 6:30 PM. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Alderman Hopper.
Here.
Alderwoman Eyckman.
Here.
Alderman, a son.
Here.
Alderwoman Day.
Here.
Alderman Barber.
Here.
Alderman Craig.
Here. Excellent. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance...
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So as we transition to Citizen Common Period, we've been reading this... I've been reading this Rules of Decorum and our Chapter 19 on the Citizen Common Period. Under Citizen Common Period, under Chapter 19, every agenda of city council meeting shall include immediately following roll call an agenda item entitled Citizen Common Period. Such agenda items shall authorize any person to address the city council. Point two. During the Citizen Common Period, no person shall speak for longer than three minutes at each council meeting unless the city council shall direct otherwise to an individual. City council direction may take the form of unanimous consent. Our timekeeper is Mr. Morrow, our city engineer. He'll give me the proverbial knock like that, and that's when I alert who's ever speaking. These are the rules of decorum. These are also laminated at the podium. There were copies on that little brown bookcase shelf-looking thing that we had a bunch of. I think the copies are gone. So I'll read this in its entirety again. City of Franklin Meeting Rules of Decorum for Attendees and Participants For those attending City of Franklin meetings. Number one, respectful and orderly conduct is expected at all times. Two, disruptive or unruly behavior, including but not limited to clapping, verbal disruptions, signs, and outbursts will not be tolerated. For those wishing to speak during City of Franklin meetings, number one, approach the microphone when the chair opens the floor for citizen comments. Number two, state your name and address for the record. Three, address your comments to the common council, board, commission, or committee only. Limit your comments to three minutes or less. No endorsements or electioneering are allowed. Number six, speakers shall refrain from presenting unduly repetitious, offensive, threatening, slanderous, defamatory, or obscene remarks. Number seven, persons wishing to speak as a spokesperson on behalf of a neighborhood, subdivision, homeowners, condominium, or business association, or similar group with common interests, shall demonstrate their qualifications to do so according to the City of Franklin Resolution number 2007-6227 before speaking on that body's behalf. Number eight, questions may be answered immediately by the chair or referred to city staff for a future reply in a timely manner. Those not adhering to these rules of decorum for attendees and participants will be asked to leave or will be removed from the meeting if necessary. Thank you. So with that, we will go to Item B1, Citizen Common Period. Any citizens wishing to speak, please approach the podium. I hope we've assured that the microphone is working. And then state your name and address for the record, and please keep it to three minutes or less. Good evening and welcome. Is it working?
Yeah, it's working. Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'm gonna go closer, a little bit.
You gotta talk right in.
Yeah, you gotta... It's karaoke time, just bring it in.
Good evening. My name is May Al-Sali, and I'm a senior at Franklin High School. I'm a resident of Franklin, but I prefer not to broadcast my address publicly, but can provide a list of the speaker's addresses if requested. I am here with some fellow Franklin High School students to speak about an important issue affecting our community. When I sat in my history classes in high school, I listened to the many devastating events that took place in history. And I often wondered to myself, why it took so long to stop them? How did people and governments not take action sooner? Well, other students and I got to witness this firsthand when violence escalated in October in Gaza and Israel. Armed violence took lives from both sides, wounded people, and left millions of Palestinians displaced. It has been 213 days. 213 days of violence and destruction. And where are we? Sitting behind our screens, watching the horror unfold? Videos of children crying out to their parents? Of a father looking under the rubble for his family? Of tears over journalists who lost their lives? When I sit in class, listening to the numbers of math problems, often the only number that runs through my head daily is the tens of thousands of Palestinians killed. How can I go about celebrating Mother's Day this upcoming Sunday while knowing that 37 children every day are losing their mothers in Gaza? This is not just an international issue. This issue affects us down to the local level. American citizens continue to face problems ranging from inflation to the affordability of healthcare. And yet, our tax dollars that we pay are instead sent overseas to fund this war. Money that could be helping our community is instead used to harm another. It's important that we, as a city, add a ceasefire resolution to the May 21st agenda so that when future Franklin High School students learn about America's response to what's happening in Gaza and they hear about the cities that helped support a ceasefire resolution, they can hear about the city council of 2024 that helped pass one in Franklin, Wisconsin. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. Yes, sir.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Yusuf Siddiki, and I'm a senior at Franklin High School. I'm a resident of Franklin, but I also prefer not to broadcast my address publicly, but can provide it if requested. Many people think that today's topic of discussion is about politics, about taking sides. But in reality, this issue is truly about humanity more than anything. Around 35,000 human lives have been lost in Palestine, over 70% of those being women and children. Although it seems like I'm just mentioning numbers, each and every single one of these numbers, all 35,000, is a human life. A mother, a son, a daughter, a brother, a father, a cousin... I can keep going. Families are being destroyed. Cities are being destroyed. And lives of many are being demolished. Behind each of these numbers lies a heartbreaking story of loss and grief. Imagine the anguish of a mother who has lost her child, the despair of a father who can no longer protect his family, the shattered dreams of children who see their homes destroyed in front of their own eyes. These are not statistics. They are realities of human suffering that demand our attention and our action. For reference, Madison Square Garden, one of the world's most famous arenas, often referred to as the World Stage, holds around 18,000 people. Now imagine 35,000. Almost two fully sold-out arenas, all have been killed. The lives of innocent children, children who have never harmed a soul in their lives have been lost. 13,000 kids, to be exact. Now, I'm a proud member of this Franklin community, and this issue needs immediate attention. While political issues continue to brew, a ceasefire is the only solution for the loss of innocent lives, and I hope you guys all take it into consideration. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. You're gonna wanna move that mic down and closer.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Farah Ayesh, and I'm a freshman student at Franklin High School and a current resident at Franklin. I prefer not to broadcast my address publicly, but can provide it in writing if requested. I'm sure everyone here is already aware of the tragedies currently happening in the Middle East. But if you are unaware, innocent men, women, and children are currently being bombed, starved, and subjected to the world's most unimaginable war crimes today. I am here today, like many others, to speak to you about the immediate need for a ceasefire in Gaza. It is difficult to imagine being confined to a place where you cannot move, where essential foods, like... essential supplies, like food and medicine, are scarce, and where hope for a better future feels like a distant dream. This is the reality for the people of Gaza who are trapped by suffocating... who are trapped by a suffocating blockade that restricts their access to basic necessities and opportunities for a better life. But it is not just physical barriers that imprison the people of Gaza. It is also the lack of hope and absence of prospects for a brighter future. They're trapped not only by concrete walls, but by the indifference of the world to their plight. You must remember that behind every statistic, every headline, there are real lives hanging in the balance. Speaking of statistics, let's narrow it down to the city of Franklin. One out of 10 people within Milwaukee County have diabetes and, on average, are paying $20,000 on medical expenses annually, and a little over half the $20,000 is due to insulin only. Instead of investing our money to foreign governments who use that money to destroy universities, homes, hospitals... our money in hospitals. Our money needs to be invested into our healthcare system. A ceasefire would give Gaza a chance to live without constant fear and uncertainty. It would allow aid to reach those who need it most and open the doors for talks to find a lasting solution to the conflict. Gaza is not just a distant conflict. It is a humanitarian crisis that demands our attention and our action.
Good evening.
Oh. Don't break it, oh my god.
Good evening. My name is Mohammed Saif, and I'm a freshman at Franklin High School. I live on 7128 West Rossin Avenue. Franklin should pass the ceasefire resolution because the war has caused so much harm to the Palestinian civilians. For far too long, the people of Gaza have endured terrible hardships. Since October 7th, over 34,000 Palestinians have been killed and over 78,000 injured, most of which are civilians and almost half children. And there are thousands more missing, a lot of them stuck under the rubble. During this war, most of the Gaza Strip has been completely eradicated. To give you some vision of what is happening there, there are only 12 out of 35 hospitals still partially functioning, according to Al Jazeera. And even those hospitals are overwhelmed because they don't have the supplies or staff needed to care for the thousands injured in the war. Also, children in Gaza have been able to... to attend... haven't been able to attend school and get educated since the start of the war, which has been ongoing for about seven months now. One more devastating fact includes the displacement of nearly 2 million Palestinians. The people of Gaza are stripped of their basic human rights because they don't even have the necessities for life, like food, water, or shelter. The UN states that the destruction of homes in Gaza is worse than any other since World War II. Because of all of this destruction, the estimated cost to rebuild the Gaza Strip is between $40 billion to $50 billion. This all shows how the situation in Gaza has become a humanitarian crisis. Even if Palestinians try to evacuate to avoid the danger, there is nowhere safe to go. When Israel warns the people of Gaza to evacuate, they only do so to bomb that exact place a few hours later. According to a New York Times investigation, Israel heavily bombed evacuation areas that were designated as safe more than 200 times. This displays the human rights catastrophe that the people in Gaza are suffering from. These facts reflect the struggle civilians have been facing for the past seven months. And it is easy to look past the number, but think about all the lives, the stories, the families, and the homes that have been destroyed. So to conclude this, I just want to say that you should really put in the time to think about the Palestinians who are suffering and to imagine how you'd act if this were to happen in Franklin. Or to remember back to how the world acted when Ukraine was being bombed. What is different now? We can't turn a blind eye to this crisis any longer. We need to do something, and this is right to our humanity. Thank you for listening.
My name is Najee Al-Rumahy. I am a junior at Franklin High School, and I am a resident of Franklin and prefer not to broadcast my address publicly. As Mohammed has stated, between October 7th, 2023, and February 7th, 2024, the Gaza Strip has become a site of unimaginable horror with over 34,000 Palestinians losing their lives and more than 78,000 sustaining injuries. These statistics, while staggering, represent not just numbers on a page, but lives shattered, families torn apart, and futures destroyed. But these people aren't just numbers on a chart. This conflict has had a disproportionate impact on the most vulnerable: women and children. Those who we, our top priority, should be protecting. 70% of those killed are reported to be women and children, innocent victims caught in the crossfire of unjust war. Furthermore, the data paints a disturbing picture of relentless violence and suffering. With an average of 250 Palestinians losing their lives every day in Gaza, this staggering figure surpasses the daily death tolls in some of the most notorious conflict zones, including Syria, Iraq, and Ukraine. Ladies and gentlemen, these numbers are not just that, numbers. They are people. They are people who have suffered due to unjust policies and biased agendas. They are a call to action, an appeal for compassion and solidarity in the face of unjust suffering. We must have a moral obligation to stand on the side of justice and to stand for peace in the face of violence. In closing, I urge each and every one of you to consider the weight of the data presented here today. Let us not turn a blind eye to the suffering of our fellow human beings. Let us stand united in our commitment to peace, justice, and sanctity of human life. The action... The time for action is now.
Igor Solunsky. I'm a resident of Franklin, 7385 46th Street, South 46th Street. I'm not afraid to broadcast my place, my residence. We heard here very touching stories, and I am very sad about the suffering of Palestinian people as anyone else. But let's talk about some facts. On October 7th, Hamas, the terrorist organization, attacked Israel, killing 1,400 civilians and also raping, burning houses, and taking about 240 people as hostages. 132 of these people, children, women, elderly people, even babies, are still held hostages. Also, Hamas does not... should be equated to the Palestinian authorities. In fact, Hamas took over Gaza in a bloody coup in 2006. And since then, it holds its people hostage, stirring the violence, attacking both Israeli and their political opponents inside Gaza and at the Western Bank, and proclaiming that the only way how they would be appeased is a complete elimination of state of Israel and deaths of all its Jewish residents. In that case, I just would like to say that if city council would consider to put any ceasefire resolution, it should include that Hamas would surrender its authority in Gaza to the Palestinian authorities, that Hamas would be taken to the justice by International Criminal Court, where they deserve to be. And that would probably be the quickest way to peace. Also, anyone asking why the Israeli bombing destroys hospitals? That's because Hamas stockpiled the armaments there in violation of Geneva Convention or putting in missile launchers in the hospitals, kindergartens, schools, again, holding the civilian Palestinian people as their own hostages. So that's all I wanted to say. So please, besides all those very emotional speeches, let's take to attention those very sad facts. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Debbie Davis, 9460 South 96th Street. I really appreciate everyone who's spoken so far, and I just want to clarify that the... we call it a ceasefire resolution for short, but, you know, we really want an end to all the violence in the Gaza conflict. So, and the ceasefire doesn't go into a lot of historical detail. It's just asking for peace. You can't hear me?
Not at all.
Okay, sorry. Debbie Davis, 9460 South 96th Street. And I just wanted to clarify that we call it ceasefire for short, but it's really a resolution asking for... trying to find a pathway for peace on both sides. So we don't mean to get into a lot of historical detail or debate, but I think we all have a consensus that we want to see peace in the region. And so, and we're just asking for alderpeople to put the resolution on the agenda for the next meeting, for the May 21st meeting. So I think you have till Friday to do that. So we're hoping that you can support the youth. I've never seen youth ask us for anything. We ask youth in Volition Franklin, and they've really stepped forward and do marvelous work for the city. And now our youth are asking us for this. So I'm hoping that we can put it on the agenda for May 21st.
Hello, everyone. My name is Yusuf Abu Awad. I'm a junior at Franklin High School. I would not prefer my address being broadcasted, but I will give it if needed. Today, I'm going to be talking about two different Palestinian personal stories from the present and the past and dive deep into their stories. Al Jazeera, a well-known media company, interviewed a displaced Palestinian in Khan Yunis. Her name is Dunia Ashur. She is 23 years old and was forced to evacuate from her home to a refugee camp. The only thing she and her family managed to bring with them was a car and a dog. Now she lives with no water, no electricity, and a very minimal amount of food. Not only that, but also her parents have lost their jobs. Her mom and dad sleep in a car while she sleeps in a classroom full of 30 people. A young girl in her 20s has to live a life of minimal access to water, electricity, food, and an uncomfortable, almost inhumane sleeping area. What a cruel government where normal residents of an area are forced out of their homes for something out of their hands. And she ends up by stating, "Nothing after this war is the same, and I don't know if I'm next to leave or die." This shows how Palestinians are living in fear of being displaced or even killed at any moment. And as a Palestinian myself, I decided to ask my grandpa because he witnessed and lived the conflict from the beginning. A quick Google search would have done the job, but I wanted to understand it from more of a primary firsthand source. My grandpa said, "I was four years old, and we lived a harmless life as farmers. A couple months prior, we heard on the news that armed Zionist gangs were going into villages and causing massacre of killings." The village we lived in was a small village outside of Hebron. One day, we got news that they were one village away from our village. We were forced to run to a nearby mountain unprepared and settle there for three days until they passed. So after three days, we found a safe route that led us to Jordan because it was the closest country that bordered Palestine. The journey was no easy task. Jordan was 47 miles away, and we didn't have much water, food, or shelter. But we had no other choice. We suffered dramatically during this journey and kept suffering in Jordan. We had to start a whole new life from scratch. Zionists coming into villages of citizens and killing whoever stands in their way. We will never forgive them. This demonstrates a long historic pattern of violence and displays our connection to this war and land. While this war may be thousands of miles away, its effects are still impacting us today.
Good afternoon. My name is Mona Abu Kamara, and I am a resident at Franklin, except I prefer not to share my address. I am also a sophomore at Franklin High School, and I am here to ask the council to put forth a ceasefire resolution for the city of Franklin. Let me put this in perspective for you. Imagine waking up every day scared your house will be bombed and destroyed before the day ends. Imagine a woman in Gaza who doesn't have access to the feminine products that she needs or doctors to help deliver her babies. Everyday necessities are no longer accessible. Imagine being a parent who is unsure if she will be able to feed her children each day. Imagine walking on the street fearing that you will be bombed, shot, or even killed before you can make it home to your family. While you have the access to everyday necessities, like food and water, the people and their families in Gaza are dying because our tax money is funding the genocide. Money that could be used in our community in Franklin and in our schools. The United States is funding Israel with billions of dollars for bombs and war machines when we can use this tax money in pla... I'm sorry. When we can use this tax money in places such as education. We need a ceasefire now, and we need Franklin to be added to the list of cities that voted for a yes to a ceasefire.
My name is... Well, there you go. My name is Samir Hamdan, and I'm a senior at Franklin High School. I'm going to be going to Madison in just a few months to start my freshman year of college. But before I do, I want to talk about my experience and my perspective on this genocide in Gaza. I'm a resident in Franklin, and I'll share my address in private if you'd like, but I'm not gonna do it right now. Every day, I open Instagram and I see death. I see dead men, women, and children bombed or crushed by rubble. I open TikTok and I see cruelty. I see Israeli soldiers knocking on bombed... bombed... knocking on... knocking on the doors of a completely bombed house and asking if anybody's home, laughing. I see... I open YouTube, and I see desperate pleas for help from starving citizens who are denied aid. This is an inhumane genocide, and it is right in front of my eyes. Everything I was taught in elementary, middle, and high school has told me that this is wrong. I learned about slavery and how it was wrong. I learned about the apartheid South Africa and how it was wrong. And now I look at what's happening in Gaza, and it's wrong. But ultimately, what I feel the most is not sadness or grief. It's frustration and it's powerlessness. And when it comes to resolutions like these, there's a common sentiment that they don't do anything, that they don't matter. But that couldn't be farther from the truth. What resolutions like this do is show who we are. It gives me and students like me a little bit of power, and it alleviates that intense frustration. Because at the very least, I'm part of a community that stood up[1609.80] part of a community that stood up when it was hard to stand up. It sends the message that we weren't afraid to stand up, to say that murder is wrong, that kidnapping and taking hostages is wrong, that genocide is wrong. To say that it isn't, to stay silent, is to tell students like me that what we are seeing every single day isn't happening. And I want to leave for college proud of the town that raised me. So I ask you, please consider including this resolution in the agenda and let the community speak.
Good evening. My name is Uday Mustafa, and I'm a junior at Franklin High School. I live at 6965 South Creek Court. We have been taught as kids that education is very important in our lives. However, kids in Gaza have been denied this opportunity due to targeting of universities and schools by Israel, a country we continuously support and fund. This has resulted in the loss of opportunities for many kids and students as around 14,000 children have been killed in Israel's offense. A whole generation just like us has lost an opportunity to have a career, goals, and access to further education. As students, we have been taught that the first thing mentioned in the First Amendment is the freedom of religion. However, during this war, we have seen many breaches of these principles that we hold so dear. People in Gaza have not only been denied education, but religion as well. As students at Franklin High School, we've been given the opportunity to pray at school, but we are very concerned because students in Gaza have lost their schools to even learn in and their mosques to pray at due to continued targeting from Israeli airstrikes. Israel has been carrying out offenses on places of worship, which is considered a war crime under international law. 1,000 of the 1,200 mosques in the Gaza Strip have been bombed and completely destroyed. Adding to that, churches have been targeted as well. On October 19th, 2023, Israel carried on an airstrike on the Greek Orthodox Church of St. Parvarius, which is the third oldest church in the world, killing many sheltered inside. This demonstrates how this war has gone against our American values, and that it's time to put an end to this war. Another thing we have to consider when speaking about education is our educators. They're responsible for educating students and nurturing a further interest into our education so that students can build a better society in the future. However, since the start of the war, it's been documented that 261 students and around 100 university professors have been killed in Gaza since October, and 5,000-plus students have been murdered in Israeli airstrikes. Freedom of religion, the importance of education, and opportunity, these are the values that we've been taught as students and hold closest to our hearts as the foundation of a successful society. And we, as students especially, can no longer stay quiet aside and watch these atrocities take place by a country that our government considers our ally and stay silent. We have to ask ourselves how many more civilians, students, teachers, schools, universities, mosques, and churches have to be destroyed in order for us to say enough is enough. And because of all this, we are asking for the ceasefire to be added on the agenda on May 21st. Thank you very much.
Hello. My name is Nari Man Hamdan. I'm a 17-year-old high school student that attends Franklin High and a resident of Franklin. I prefer not to broadcast my address publicly, but I'll provide it in writing requested. Throughout all my years of attending school, I always had different kinds of things to worry about, to worry and stress about. When I was in elementary school, I worried about getting up and ready in time to catch my bus. Middle school, I worried about fitting into different social groups. In high school, I worry about my grades and having a good enough GPA for college. And I know when I get to college, I'll be stressing about all the different finances, as well as where my career path takes me in life. Throughout these years, I struggle to tell myself that it will be okay, and I'll move past these worries like everybody else does, which I eventually do. But what I can tell myself is this: I won't ever have to wake up as a student that attends school in distress with the idea that school could potentially be canceled due to the missiles that fly over my head every single day. The missiles that have killed my family, the missiles that my family and I hear every single night before dinner, the missiles that have killed my family for the last 76 years. I don't have to worry about if my school or university is next on Israel's list of hundreds and thousands of schools destroyed with hundreds of students attending. I don't have to wake up each morning wondering if I'll get taught the education that is needed. The students in Gaza worry about if they have to take on the same tough responsibilities their grandparents took on when Palestine was forced into a two-state. They wake up wondering and hoping for the rest of the world to hold Israel accountable for the horrifying crimes they commit. The students in Gaza don't get to eventually move past their worries like we all get to do in times of stress. Instead of learning about their education, they learn how to deal with traumatic and horrifying experiences at a young age. They learn how to deal with it because they have to, because the disgusting world leaders fail to recognize the genocide. The students and children in Gaza want education. They want to learn. They want a ceasefire. They don't want to listen in on the airstrikes that are awaiting for them every day. We get to attend class every single day but fail to remember that there are no universities left in Gaza, no future, no opportunity, and no growth for the upcoming generations. When do the numbers become enough for the world to speak out? When do the numbers become enough for the world to stop the silence? I, a Franklin resident, demand for Franklin to agree to a ceasefire resolution. A permanent ceasefire is mandatory to end the violence and the atrocities. A ceasefire is required in order for the students in Gaza to receive an education. The students and children in Palestine are just like any other in the world, but the difference between them and us is that they get to attend school with the privilege of peace. The students and children in Palestine are just like any other in the world, but the difference between them and us is that we have the privilege to attend school in peace. We have the privilege to attend school without fear. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Zainah Katoom, and I am a sophomore at Franklin High School. I am a resident of Franklin. I prefer not to broadcast my address publicly but can provide it in writing if requested. When we go yearly to pay our taxes, we believe that our money goes towards something positive, like upgrading schools, lowering expenses of healthcare, or even things like donating to underdeveloped cities. Instead, our tax dollars are used to contribute to the killing of thousands of innocent Palestinian women, children, and men. To understand the situation, we need to understand the perspective of how much money Israel receives from the US. The US has used $250 million worth of military aid to send to Israel since October 7. This doesn't include the past 76 years of occupation, killing, and destruction. The United States funds Israel the most amount of money compared to any other country, aid that has been consistent since the 70s. This money essentially translates to casualties given to the Palestinians in Gaza and in the occupied West Bank. The aid given to Israel will continue to further escalate the humanitarian issue and make it worse. Instead of the money being used to expand and repelish the weapons that continues to help Israel with the killings of Palestinians, the money can be used for better roads, schools, jobs, budgets, and so much more. We work for our families and our loved ones, not for our money to be used to kill other people. We want our tax dollars contributing to the future of America. The future is in our hands, which is why I stand here today asking Franklin to add a ceasefire resolution to the May 21st agenda to be voted on. Thank you.
Okay. So let me ask you this. Please, come forward. What we're looking for is we understand and appreciate, and this is unbelievably organized, because I also went to Franklin High School, and one of my classmates is out here, and we would have never been this organized. So that's in itself amazing. And so what we're trying to do is trying to allow everybody to state their points, make their statements. But how, just show of hands, who else is looking to speak on this? Because what we're looking at, we've got 25 items on the agenda. We're trying to get out of here before midnight. So if you do wish to speak, please, just do a quick. Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi. My name is Shad Hamdan. I live at 8248 South 88th Street, and I am a junior at Franklin High School. I have a little sister who is three years old, and much like any other toddler, she enjoys coloring, candy, snacks, and playing with toys. The life of having a childhood in a loving environment is the right of every single child in this world, to be able to learn, grow up, try new hobbies, and learn something truly meaningful from life. Children in Palestine do not get this experience, not just since October 7, but in 2009. Books, candles, crowns, notebooks, fishing rods, glasses, sheets, pencils, and blankets were all banned from the city of Gaza in Palestine. In 2016, chocolate, potato, chips, newspapers, sewing machine, AC, and even jam was banned. In 2024, the color green was banned. In the past year, the Israeli military sent back a supply truck filled with aid because the tents were green, stating, "Green is a military color." This is a genocide. Notebooks, crowns, children's books, pencils, blankets, candy, food, and snacks are not a threat to Israel. Since when are colors criticized and a threat to an armed government? When did it become okay to kill 34,000 people in a span of eight months, 23,000 of them being children and women under the age of 18? The death of women and children in this genocide is cruel treatment and abuse by international law, in violation of the First Amendment. No mother should have to thank God that her child was taken away from her just so they may escape the constant abuse of being a child in Gaza. It is crucial for Franklin to agree to a ceasefire resolution for Palestine. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Hamdan Rizvi, and I live at 8842 West Silverwood Court, and I am a junior attending Franklin High School. As a high school student, I've seen firsthand how budget cuts have affected our school, and I believe it's important for us to send a message to our government to put our needs first. As previously mentioned, Israel receives $4 billion of US aid every year. If you were to distribute this amount between each of the 19,450 cities in the United States, each city would have over $200,000 added in budget. With this extra $200,000 added, we could build six of the 10 pickleball courts that the city of Franklin has been planning on building.
Exceptional point.
Or we could put this money towards our education at FHS. Recently, Franklin High School has had to remove a majority of our printers due to budgeting issues. A staff member also stated that we were planning on building a new condo to have room for the incoming families in the next three to four years. It was also said that we wanted to add CNA classes to our high school, as well as revamp the food courses we offer. Tech ed classes are also being planned to be moved by our pool to create more room for the classes. Lastly, I was told that we were planning on building a fieldhouse for our high school. Now, of course, all these projects will be very expensive, but even with $200,000, these projects can be built sooner than you may think. Franklin High School has also had four of our science teachers, as well as others, leave this year. Of these four science teachers, two of them left a great impact on me. They inspired me to take more biology classes and gain more interest in the medical field. They made the class an enjoyable environment and gave me a reason to show up to school. My freshman year computer programming teacher also left two years ago. He always had a positive attitude, and you could tell he was always smiling even with a mask on. He taught me the basis of computer science and made me love the subject so much that I wanted to continue it in my future career. If the reason these teachers left was because of the salary reason, it is truly a shame that we could have kept them with this extra money so that they could have left as big of an impact on my life as a Franklin High School student to the new ones coming in. And while the war may seem far away, its impact is felt right here in Franklin. The Franklin City Council's mission states to be a well-planned model community providing for a high quality of life for residents of all ages. Therefore, I urge you to pass a ceasefire resolution and to help us send a strong message to our government that we prioritize our community's needs and a higher quality of life for those in Franklin. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Kareem Hodgestead. I live at 4605 West Sharon Lane. I'm a junior at Franklin High School. Ladies and gentlemen of the city council, I'd like to bring you some statistics. According to the Council of Foreign Relations, the United States of America has sent over a quarter of a trillion dollars to Israel. To add on, there is a deal that gives Israel $4 billion a year for 10 years. We often hear big numbers and start to underestimate how much $4 billion is. To put this into perspective, $4 billion would build over 100 forest park-sized middle schools, and that would serve over 100,000 students. And that's only considering one year's worth of foreign aid towards Israel. Adding to that, we could build 40 hospitals a year in a total of 400 hospitals over 10 years, similar size to the St. Luke's Narrows in Milwaukee, which can serve up to 85,000 total patients in just one year. The money would have been used towards local schools rather than raising $170-plus million via referendum. It could upgrade our aging water systems or even support the salaries of public service workers or teachers who are leaving the district. Every dollar spent overseas could instead be directed towards initiatives that directly benefit Americans. Imagine the transformative power of redirecting these funds towards local infrastructure projects, education, healthcare, and affordable housing initiatives at a time in America when inflation is high and Americans struggle to make ends meet. Any money directed towards our programs could be used for the better. A permanent ceasefire is necessary to end the violence. Therefore, I urge you to pass a ceasefire resolution to the May 21st agenda to help us send a strong message to our government that we put our community needs and a higher quality of life for those in Franklin above all else. Thank you for your time.
Hello. Hello. My name is Raheeda Ayesh. I'm a sophomore at Franklin High School, and I am a resident of Franklin but prefer not to broadcast my address publicly but can provide if requested. Every day, I look at my phone. I see what's happening in Palestine. I see the children, the families, hungry, dying, being bombed. And then I look back at what we are doing, and all I see is that we are funding it. And I can't help but to cry for the people. I can't help but want to do something to give peace for both sides. Why are we being forced to fund a war through our taxes? It makes my heart ache. I am not as happy as I was eight months ago, eight months ago. Why? Because I get to eat luscious food, luscious food. I get to hang out with friends and family. I get to enjoy every single day of my life while others in Gaza can't. This is how I feel. I have lots of families, I mean, I have lots of friends who lived in Palestine or have family in Palestine and go to our Franklin Public School. This is how I feel. Imagine how they feel. Thank you, and thank you for coming with your time. Thank you.
Orville Seymour, 49-year resident of the city of Franklin. Let me change the subject a little bit, talk about something you can change here right tonight as you vote. Talking about the resolution that the Rock Complex, Sports Complex, has asked for a permit to hold their festivals, yet they have not paid over $1 million in property taxes. According to Dan O'Donnell, who reported on this now for two days, and I'm sure some of you've heard it, that would cause a better-than-5% increase in everybody's property taxes. That is substantial. You have the ability to change that right here tonight, to deny him that permit and make him pay up. Make him pay. I don't know if Mr. Zimmerman's here, but if just he wants to make a good political move, fire Steve Taylor. That is his big problem. Steve Taylor is the problem at the Rock Sports Complex. It's time you all recognize that. And I don't want to mention the names here tonight, but you know who I'm talking about, Ed Holfer and Courtney Day. Remember, it's on you. Thank you.
Been the same address for 49 years. We'll figure it out later. Don't worry about it.
Greetings. My name is Charlie Vortiano, and I'm a 17-year-old student at Franklin High School. I prefer not to broadcast my address publicly but can provide it in writing if requested. When I was in middle school, I felt as if I was in a bubble, surrounded myself with friends and educators from South Milwaukee, all worrying about trivial issues that anyone with hormones can have. It was all in South Milwaukee, and I had to imagine anything else when a war conflict had arisen. As my seventh grade year progressed, however, I received my first cell phone at the age of 13. I opened my eyes to the information age we currently live in today. I engaged with the internet that shifted my worldview and my outlook on life that I still have to this day. Now, the little bubble that Charlie had was gone, with me experiencing new forms of context inside and outside of the United States. Now, since moving to Franklin, my time on the internet has reminded me of the grim reality that is happening every fleeting moment as we stand here in the city council meeting. The Israeli-Palestinian conflict has had profound effects on the mental health of children and adults alike in Gaza. Palestinian-American psychologists have stated that violence spiraling in the war, the children in Gaza will have a real chance to recover from the trauma and PTSD that they are experiencing. According to a June 2023 World Bank Mental Health Report on Gaza and the West Bank, 71% of Gaza residents and 50% of Palestinian residents report that they struggle with depression and anxiety. It's important to mention, when I say this data and when I saw it for the first time within countless videos that had entered to my newsfeed, that it had a grip on my own mental state. The fact that this violence and mental deterioration being committed on such a massive scale was horrifying to me. Americans of today are affected by not just the raw data, but through the emotional pain experienced in this community. Families of heritage consisting of thousands of years of history in the United States are damaged, and even those outside of the heritage such as myself are affected from a humanitarian perspective. I implore you as the city council to add a ceasefire resolution because at the end of the day, we are all human beings that shouldn't be experiencing trauma to this extent. They are affected. We are affected as Americans, and we should act on it. Thank you.
Good evening. Oops, I broke it too.
It's rented.
Linda Mathwig, 73, 21 Brun Drive. I would like to speak to you regarding agenda item on tonight's meeting, number H, regarding the licensing and permits. I had the pleasure of going into the meeting prior to this meeting and was enlightened by the process that happens for the licensing for events. Mayor Nelson, I really wish that you were there when they discussed all the issues that happened during the taco and tequila phase.
Well, I was there for part of it, and I'm well aware of the issues. I didn't need to hear them again.
Yeah, yeah. Noise is an issue, and it was brought up, you know, how people were, you know, staggering from the event and so forth. And I know from being a bartender that bartenders need to take responsibility to limit their drinks that they give to people, and I don't know if that's happening. A lot of the things that were said tonight sound like they could be an improvement, but I'm really afraid that we're going to have the same scenario that we had last year. And to me, it almost became a disgrace to the city of Franklin to have that particular event. So with the building of the Rock, you know, everybody really looked forward to it, was they were looking to the benefits that the Rock would bring to us. And unfortunately, for a lot of people in the neighborhood, it just has become a horrendous nuisance. I'm also going to, excuse me, say for the Orchard View project, again, just the surrounding community and the area, for the residents there, it's going to just become a horrendous nuisance. And I'm hoping that I could meet with somebody to talk a little bit further about it. Regarding the tacos and tequila, I don't know what measures could be made. At one point, they had said that residents would be notified. I think by a bulk mailing, letting the people know what's going on for these events would be very helpful. And I think a bulk mailing just would really not cost a lot of money just to keep the residents informed. I'm hoping that you do not approve the licensing for the tacos. I'm hoping that you do not approve the licensing for the tacos and tequila event. The cellphone tower issues was a very big issue, but I understand that, you know, we need to have them make a profit, but I know this will be addressed tonight. I know there is money that they owe us, and I truly feel that they shouldn't be allowed to run any event unless the money that is owed is paid to the city of Franklin. So, thank you for your time.
John Chashkish, eight-six-two-five West Hawthorne Lane. And I'm also here, obviously, talking about the Rock. I've been gone for about five months, and I'm wondering if anything has been done about the speakers not only being turned into the park, but all of those speakers turned in. Can anybody answer that question for me?
Well, you're directing the question to the chair. That's me.
Okay.
So, we had, we were at the Knowles residence on Sunday, and I'll make this quick because we're almost at the one-hour mark of this conversation.
Okay, I understand.
So, we were there. A member of the Rock management was there, who was their sound engineer, was there, Michael Atkins. We did a sound check with the stadium, having the announcer there announcing what he normally announces, and the sound levels were measured and set, and they were locked in where they're not going to be able to go above that accepted level. And there's...
Excuse me, is that a fifty decibel level?
No, because just sitting there, you and I breathing, looking at each other, is fifty-five decibels. Okay, so that's right. That's the reality. And you can check with your other neighbors that were there, and it was like in the mid-to-upper fifties was with the sound check, so.
Is that within the limit, then, for the city of Franklin or state or whatever?
It's above, technically. It's above fifty-five. But we're not going to have this debate right here, right now. This is going to be something coming to licensing a little bit later, but there was. You can check with your neighborhood spokeswoman, Dana Gint. She was there. She can clue you in on everything you need to know. But I'm telling you how it went, and it went very well, and the sound is locked in, and it was a huge, it was a big improvement. The speakers have been turned into the bowl, so that's a big deal.
Yes.
And from what was under, what was explained to me is why there were speakers turned outward was for PSA announcements and so on and so forth, whatever, but now they're turned in, and it was a big, big improvement.
Great. Sounds good. Thank you.
No clapping for me?
Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Shalayah Ahmad, and I'm a junior attending Franklin High School. Today, I come before you to discuss an important decision that touches the hearts of many in our community, the decision to pass a ceasefire resolution. This decision is about standing up for what's right and showing compassion. Around fourteen thousand five hundred children have fallen victims of this conflict. These children haven't even gotten the chance to imagine the lives that we live today. Children are paying the price for a conflict they have no pardon. Even if a ceasefire resolution can accomplish the slightest chance of ending these conflicts, we should do whatever we can to save innocent lives. Recent major cities like Atlanta, Chicago, Dayton, Detroit, and Minneapolis have made courageous moves by passing a ceasefire resolution for Palestine. These resolutions aren't just words. They're a way of illustrating that we care about the peace and well-being of the people no matter where they are from. These cities have shown leadership by standing with the people of Palestine and realizing that the violence and suffering needs to stop. They have shown we can make a difference by speaking out for peace and justice. Both sides in the war are suffering numerous casualties. If there are opportunities for us to provide assistance, we should take full advantage of them, as it is morally right. So today, I ask our city to do the same. Let's stand up for what's right and support a ceasefire in Palestine. Let's show that we care about the lives of innocent people and that we want peace and justice for everyone. Passing a ceasefire resolution is not about taking sides. It's about standing up for human rights and showing compassion for those who are suffering. I urge every single one of you to think carefully about this decision and to stand with me to support the ceasefire resolution for Palestine by adding a ceasefire resolution to the May twenty-first agenda. Let's show that our city is a place of compassion, empathy, and peace. Thank you.
Just a reminder, the normal rules of decorum, we ask that it not clap, but we understand the charge and we understand the passion, but I'm just reminding you of the decorum that I read earlier. Welcome in, lady.
Good evening. My name is Leen Al-Jaradat, a senior at Franklin High School. I prefer to not broadcast my address publicly but can provide it in writing if requested. I'm here to encourage you to pass a ceasefire resolution by giving real-life example of other cities that have already passed a ceasefire resolution. On Thursday morning, Milwaukee voted to support a ceasefire in Palestine. Milwaukee is not the only one. Almost a hundred cities in the United States have also passed a ceasefire resolution. It's truly heartbreaking to see the lives of people, kids, women, and men being taken away due to something that can and should be stopped. The people being killed are not just numbers. They're real people with real emotions and real feelings. In the past two hundred thirteen days, over thirty-five thousand lives have been taken from us and many more in the years of occupation. Take a second to think about what that means. The Franklin population is about thirty-six thousand people. It's as if Franklin's population, dreams, and desires were all gone in a span of a couple months. Is it truly that difficult to stand up for the oppressed? You don't have to be Palestinian or Arab to call for a ceasefire. You just have to have empathy and think about those lives and prevent more from being lost. Thank you.
My name is Bill Hamden, and I've been a resident for eight years, one zero five eight eight South Rosemont Court. Been a happy taxpayer here. We have a great community, and I do come here as a member of the community. Everybody's here speaking about Palestine and speaking about what's happening nationally, but this is a Franklin issue. I want to really address this. I am the coach of the seventh-grade softball team, and just to give you a microcosm of what I mean, today I picked up our uniforms, and today we only received t-shirts for our uniforms. And I'm not coming here asking for handouts. What I am coming here, though, is to draw attention to what the money problem is. We have, as taxpayers here, no say in where our money goes. And I'm here because you guys represent all of us. We're all here, we're all American, we're all Franklin residents, and you guys are our voice as a part of where our money goes. And frankly, our money should be staying here. Our money shouldn't be going elsewhere. You know, every day, all of us spends between thirty and forty percent of our paycheck. Where? Where does it go? Our tax money that comes out, where does it go? We have a right to know what happens with our money. And it would be nice to have our Franklin softball team, for example, have that money, to have a fully uniform and a normal season like a lot of other communities. I'm not here asking for that, though. But it's sad that we can't even dress our own softball kids, and yet we can send money indiscriminately overseas to commit genocide. And I really want you guys to think about that, because if it's not you guys who's going to speak up for us, who's it going to be? And that's why it's very important that you guys vote for this resolution on the twenty-first for a ceasefire. It does matter. It's very important. This is a Franklin issue, and it starts locally. And we're all American, but at the same time, it's happening to all of us here. And I really want you guys to hear us out about this because it affects everybody. Thank you very much.
Dale Kerner, eighty-six thirty West Hawthorne Lane. Not to make light of the plight that is going on with these people right now. I think we all want peace in the world. I want it in my backyard. And the Rock Sports Complex has taken that away from my livelihood or my life. We just had a meeting next door. The older person that represented the greater portion of us did an excellent job. Jason, Courtney asked wonderful questions, you know, are we going to have the same thing that we had last year? It was just terrible with the loud and the noise and the language that was being used. And lo and behold, this developer still owes a million dollars. He hasn't paid yet, but he comes to you guys and asks for another permit. You should deny it to him. Also, you got to keep in consideration this time, the roads are all torn up. Loomis is tore up, Highway Hundred's tore up, the expressway is tore up. It's going to be a disaster again. I hope we find peace in the world and in my neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
John McAdams, eighty-seven thirty-five West Hawthorne Court. On behalf of myself and my wife, who could not be present tonight, we want to thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much. We appreciate your efforts in, at least it seems like going. Maybe I'm thanking you a little too early here, but this seems to be going... Find out the tenth. We will. I appreciate the sound test that went on. I just wanted to come here and, A, thank you and thank the council for what seemed like we, it seemed like we had a bamboozled seventy-nine decibel that, poof, it's gone now. That's good. It was never on the books. It was never a law. So let's reinforce the laws. That's all I'm asking. Keep on the good path right now. Let's have peace in our neighborhoods, and I think if we follow the city ordinances that are in existence, I think everybody will be happy, and I won't have to come to these meetings as much as I do right now. But, so, I appreciate your guys' efforts. Thank you very much for doing that. It just, I want to make sure that, the last point I want to make is on the special events. Tacos and tequila last year was a disgrace. It was a vile violation of, I feel, our city and our neighborhoods with the filth and the racism and the foul language that was used out in here that could be heard for miles around. It was a disgrace on our city that we would allow someone to be in that place, that it could be broadcast publicly like that. I have no problem if the Rock wants to do that and if it's contained within the Rock itself. So that's my concern, is special agendas or special permits going forward. Fireworks, I don't care. That's ten, fifteen minutes. Big deal. That's my opinion, that's my wife's opinion, but the rap concerts, if we could also keep those at a reasonable level, too. I don't want special permits being issued. Now we're hearing F-bombs and all this filth and foul language and stuff, you know, penetrating our peaceful backyards. Thank you very much. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Andy Kleist, sixty twenty-five Parkview Road, Greendale. I live a mile and a half north of the Rock in Greendale and regularly hear noise from baseball games, concerts, the Hills Have Eyes, and other various events. I and many other neighbors have been to an endless number of meetings over the last ten years, asking and begging the Rock and the city of Franklin to turn down the sound, only to be ignored and ridiculed. At the March and April twenty-twenty-four Common Council meetings, you, the common council, acknowledged with Resolution twenty-twenty-four-eighty-one oh nine that you have not been holding the Rock accountable to many of Franklin's municipal codes regarding permitting sound and noise over the last ten years. With that resolution, each of you made a commitment that going forward, you will hold everyone, including the Rock, accountable to all of Franklin's municipal codes. As we review the Rock's permits tonight and on Thursday at the Plan Commission meeting, I ask that you hold yourselves accountable to the commitment you made with that resolution. Surrounding neighbors and I are fed up. The noise issues must be addressed with these permits, and you need to hold the Rock accountable to Franklin's permitting and noise ordinances. Specifically regarding tonight's resolution for item two, there are a few items I'd like to point out. First, item two's resolution and in the planning manager's report, it states that fifty-five decibels is the allowable decibel level at the property line for the Rock's district. But in the resolution you committed to last month, it states that the receiving district determines the allowable decibel level, and that allowable decibel level is fifty decibels until ten PM and forty-five decibels after ten PM at the property line. This is very clear. So why is the planning department not following this municipal code? Secondly, the planning manager recommends limiting the number of events that would exceed the established sound limits and suggests there should be no more than six events in total for the year. The Milwaukee County Sound Study indicates the Umbrella Bar concerts, fireworks, and other events exceed the Franklin and Greendale noise limits. There are currently twenty-eight events scheduled that would exceed the established sound limits presented in Franklin Municipal Code, which is confirmed by the resolution you approved last month. This is one and a half events every week, starting this week through the first week of September. One and a half events, almost two events every week that exceed the noise limits. Lastly, in the planning manager's report in a Milwaukee County Sound Study, it is recommended that an evaluation be conducted of the staging, engineering, and all sound systems currently in place at the stadium. Evaluation should be conducted by a qualified acoustical consulting company who has granted full access to the facility and include a review of the location, orientation, type, and broadcast range of the existing sound system design and the design recommendations with respect to the sound thresholds, monitoring devices, engineering, and design. Since the developer did not allow the county to do this as was required, I would like to see this happen, as we have been asking for the last sixty years now that those monitors be evaluated and moved to the correct louder locations on the property and that the microphones are at the correct height and level with the source of the noise. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Leith Al-Jaradat, a junior at Franklin High School. I live on South Tumble Creek Drive. First, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to come and speak in front of you. I'm here to stress the importance of passing a ceasefire resolution from the city of Franklin. We have come to you today as our representatives, hoping that you respond to our demands and to accurately represent our interests as citizens of Franklin. The citizens of Franklin do not want to be on the wrong side of history. We refuse to fund the killing of tens of thousands of innocent women and children. This is not about choosing between Israel and Palestine. This is about minimizing the death of thousands of people. It is about choosing humanity and sympathy for innocent lives impacted during the crisis. It is what we can do to represent our values and choose peace over violence. To bring this back into Franklin specifically, Franklin is the eighty-sixth highest city in the United States in terms of percentage of Palestinians. Passing a ceasefire resolution will bring the community together in support of human life and an end to violence. The fact that many high school students took time to come and voice their concerns about their government decisions and take matters into their own hands to push for a ceasefire demonstrates the importance of the topic to the Franklin population. I just want to highlight the fact that no one can claim to condemn the violence and killing of innocent lives but still oppose a ceasefire. Such global conflicts impact citizens of global society by nature. The last seven months of daily bombing massacres and massacres had huge effects on the mental health of residents of Franklin. Many have families that were directly impacted as a result of the random air attacks. Fathers, mothers, children, grandmas, grandpas, brothers, sisters, even babies that did not see the face of earth, all brutally killed. Those losses not only take their hit on the family of the deceased, but also on the community and anyone seeing such images. It seems to be a normal occurrence to have a funeral for the deceased of a relative family from Palestine. If we claim to be people who care about human rights, women's rights, and children's rights, a ceasefire resolution is the least we can do. While many cities have already passed similar resolutions, the impact of Franklin should not be understated. Even if it does not directly help those struggling or undo the aftermath of the conflict, it's a step to ensure that Palestinian voices are heard. Thank you.
My name is Maya Abu-Hamida, and I'm a freshman student at Franklin High School and a current resident of Franklin. I prefer not to broadcast my address publicly but can provide it in writing if requested. Today, as we gather together, I'm reminded of the power of unity, compassion, and understanding as a young Palestinian American growing up in the United States. I have learned that our voices, no matter how small, can change and bring hope to even the darkest of situations, such as the genocide in Palestine. This devastation is tearing families apart, shattering dreams, and extinguishing the bright futures of so many young individuals. It's heartbreaking to hear about children my age who live in fear every day, unable to go to school or play outside without the threat of violence looming over them every day. But here in this room, we have the opportunity to make a difference. We have the power to stand up for peace, to advocate for dialogue instead of destruction, and to demand an end to this cycle of occupation that's occurred in Palestine for seventy-six years. Imagine the impact we could have if the city of Franklin joined hands with our counterparts in Gaza, sending a message of solidarity and hope across borders and oceans. Together, we can show the world that peace is not just a dream but a tangible reality within our grasp. So let us resolve here and now for the city of Franklin to call for a ceasefire in Gaza. The significance of resolving to a ceasefire in Gaza cannot be overstated. This issue directly affects students, not just in Gaza, but also here in our communities. As our tax dollars are being used to fund violence and destruction, imagine those resources were redirected to support our communities, investing in education, healthcare, infrastructure, rather than funding a genocide abroad. The toll of this ongoing situation on mental health should not be ignored. As families are suffering the trauma of the loss and displacement in Gaza, it's heartening to know that other cities across the U.S. have also passed a ceasefire resolution, showing that we are not alone in our desire for peace and justice. Together, let us stand as a light of hope, advocating for compassion, dialogue, and re... dialogue and reconciliation in Gaza. Thank you.
Try to go like three more, then we have to move on.
Good evening, council members. My name is Omar Abarkoub and I live at 5232 West Clair Court. So in this gathering today, we have heard the Franklin youth give a plea, a plea for their voices to be heard and their earnest for changes to be made. Yet some continue to question whether this is a pressing issue for our community. And to those I would ask questions. If the voices of the students that made their cases today are a pressing issue in Franklin, then what is? If the displeasure with how our taxes are being, are being spent isn't a pressing issue in Franklin, then what is? If the division and animosity that we are facing in our own city isn't a pressing issue in Franklin, then what is? And the reality is this, while we may not be the ones bombed, it is the relatives of thousands of Palestinians, American citizens living in Franklin who are being killed using their own tax money. Franklin has been impacted by this war mentally, socially and economically. It divided us into a war of us and them and who's right and who's wrong. And the truth is, we are not here today to ask you to pick a side between Palestine and Israel. We are here to ask you to choose peace, to choose the ending of war and to choose the end of killing children, women and the elderly regardless of race, gender, ethnicity or anything that divides us. War doesn't solve problems and war doesn't yield winners. And so long as we, the City of Franklin, stay silent, we are, we are being complicit to the thousands of innocent lives that are being lost. And we are also being complicit to the irrational spending of our government on this foreign war. And while your vote won't end the war today, it is a step in the right direction. Do not underestimate the power that you have in your positions today. We do have the ability to send a message to our government and a strong one, that we will not sit and stay silent as this war goes on. It is not business as usual. Enough is enough. And I beg you to consider the message you send by voting against a ceasefire resolution. The message you'd sent to the thousands of students, hundreds of which from our very own high school, who put faith in you to represent them and represent their beliefs. And to the hundreds of families who trust you to speak up, speak out against how their taxes are being used. And to the countless Americans who believed in this country's values of protecting life, speech and religion as although they continue to watch hospital after hospital, university after university, school after school, mosque after mosque and church after church being unapologetically bombed. Which begs me to ask the final question. If these people and their beliefs and their cases and their issues aren't a pressing matter in Franklin, then what is? And our request is simple. We request a ceasefire resolution to be put on the May 21st agenda and more importantly, we demand a ceasefire. We demand an immediate ceasefire that puts an end to the killing of innocent men, women and children. Thank you.
Good evening. Chorum Zubari, 8550 West Hawthorne Lane. And as you can tell by the address, that Rock is my backyard. I just want to bring, first of all, congratulations. I have been very regular at this podium. Couple of years ago, this is the first time seeing you at this chair. So congratulations and every single alderman and alderwoman. Good to see you here. My fundamental plea is, I've been a resident for 15 years of Franklin. And when I actually made the decision, the decision was solely based on one factor. It was where I'm going to raise my kids. Which place is going to be the safest, more, carrying a more potential? Where can they get the best education? And where can they excel? So which community would that be in the whole of the United States? And I chose Franklin. And that's why I cautiously talked about that Rock is not going to be in the benefit of the younger generation. Yes, the people from the outside is going to come in and play here and there's going to be noise, there's going to be light, all of it. But the people who are actually living here is not going to be fully able to raise their kids in an environment where they excel in the society, where they get the education what they can. And that's why, I mean, irrespective of what we said, you guys go ahead. I mean, I'm not saying you guys, but your predecessors actually declared that as a TIF district and then sold it for a dollar and not generating any money from it. And we have heard enough that how the money is being used in this city is not in an optimal way. So my plea would be that please stop it here. Yes, you did the sound test, you did all of that, but at the same time, when the bass is increased, our house shakes, literally shakes, and the kids actually feel their bed is moving. I'm not talking about the sound. I'm talking about the bass, which actually all of a sudden turns up. It's not the sound volume we are talking about. And you probably took a random test, a spot test, but that's not the case. Going to be all alone. Now, I'm connecting it to the point where you probably going to think that, you know, even United Nations resolution is not doing anything. What we going to do if you pass the resolution here? Would, what would impact, how would it impact Franklin if we are able to actually pass the resolution? My plea would be, you have heard the students. Their mentality for past six months is shattered. Like, I mean, they are literally cannot think straight. They're watching all these videos. They are not really satisfied that we are doing enough. So if you are able to pass the resolution, at least we are able to convince them that they have done something. They have done whatever they could. Thank you.
Okay, last up.
Hi, my name is Sidel Kattum. I'm 13 years old. And I have a poem today and I'm hoping for a ceasefire. The tears of a Palestinian child will never dry. They always cry and their people always die as they stare at the bomb bordered sky. They ask our Lord, why, oh, why? They watch these filthy lies and stare at their mother as she cries. She's traumatized from the bombs that fly. They cannot even sigh because they never got to say goodbye. The lives lost in a short time, remembering her sister, cold, dead eyes. She tries to defy but is too scared to try. They're running out of supplies but have no money to buy. Staring from the window so high, if only she was in Dubai. I'm a Palestinian child. I always cry. I might just die. I have no money to buy and no will to try. I want to escape, but there is no tape. And the soldiers are coming back. So we need to stand up and fight back. The bodies of families being dragged and our clothes are just rags. I'm a Palestinian child. Why, oh, why? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And the last person speaking will be Dana Gint tonight for Assistant Common Period.
Thank you. Dana Gint, night 011, West Hawthorne Lane. What a beautiful poem. Very, very touching. I totally understand with everyone's comments tonight trying to protect their family and their quality of life. That is what I have been trying to do for the last 10 years. I just want to bring to your attention, there's, there's things that have been going on in Franklin for 10 years regarding being a public nuisance. The Rock Sports Complex has literally impacted people's daily lives for six months of the year, for almost on a daily basis, for almost 10 years. We've been pleading for relief and I understand that there was a sound check done, but there was not an actual event going on. And I'm making no commitment that that is actually solving the problem. Because first of all, the monitor that's on our, on the west boundary, that, the microphone's like 30 feet in the air. Any resource for acoustic says that the ear is supposed to be the level of the source. So it's on top of a 10-foot boom and then it's 20 feet in the air. On the local radio station this morning, they were talking, a development team member was saying that they have done their part and they're blaming the whole shortfall on the city, by the way. That they did their part and they did what they said they were going to do. I want to make it very clear that there are things that, so I'll just point out one of the contracts. It says that the development will comply with all applicable zoning ordinances provisions, municipal code and university, united development ordinances. Clearly, they haven't been doing that for 10 years. You guys wrote a resolution regarding that. In 2014, their application literally says, "The public address system proposed for this development utilizes technology to reduce significantly, if not eliminate, audible decibels or noise pollution that may disturb the adjacent properties." I know there's a lot of people here, that there are over 1,000 complaints filed about the noise coming off the property. And this is their application from 2014 that the city ignored 10 years later. Additionally, on that same application, it says, "The speakers will be designed to be, oh, the loudspeaker system will be oriented towards the listener's ear. It will be directed into the crowd and not out." Well, we all know that that's not true. They were pointing it out to our neighborhood for years. The district intent for the development says that the stadium in particular and all areas of the sports complex will use a superior lighting and sound system to minimize any potential adverse impacts on the adjacent properties. I could go on forever, obviously. The biggest concern I have is that you guys worked on this very detailed resolution. You're already not following it. Already. Seriously. That's just so offensive to me that you're making all these promises and you can't even follow what you just approved. I can give you examples. Okay, so the Planning Department recommends for the, so the Planning Department recommends a review of some applications and they're waiting for 90 days until after the season starts. Why do you have to wait for 90 days to review the monitoring system? When the milkman games start tomorrow, you want to wait 90 days till the end of the season to look at the monitoring results. This is just overwhelming the way you guys treat this neighborhood and the community and it just needs to stop. Thank you.
What was the last? Well, Judy, we were going to shut it down, but if you wish to be the final hurrah. And then we're going to, well, we're going to take a break before G1. So I already have that planned, so.
Judy Mills.
Could you just speak up a little bit?
Now, can you hear me?
He's got to pull it towards you more.
Now? Okay. Judy Mills, 8018 West Winston Way, Franklin, Wisconsin. I live a little bit less than a mile from The Rock.
Hey Judy, pretend back when you were an educator and you were yelling at me because I was talking in class.
Okay.
Just get angry. Get in there. Thank you, Dr. Khan.
Now?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Remember, it's closer towards you, Judy.
Okay, can you, now can you hear me?
Oh, you haven't touched it and you keep asking the same question.
Okay.
Pull it towards you a little more.
All right.
Or not.
I, I have a, thank you. I, I know I don't, I, my voice doesn't carry. I have a general kind of statement. There's a magazine that goes out throughout the general area. It's called MKE Magazine. And they rated all the suburbs in the metropolitan area, Zaki County, Waukesha County, Milwaukee County. Franklin came in second from the bottom. Second from the bottom. We would have been at the bottom except that we got points for being close to Mitchell Field. Otherwise, bottom. I, I have my hair done in Shaboi, in Shorewood. I have my dental work done in Brookfield. When I go there, they're talking about Franklin. My dentist pulled up a chair next to the dental chair and he, and he said, "Oh, my friends and I have been talking about Franklin. What the hell's going on there?" And he literally talked to me an hour wanting information on Franklin before he even looked in my mouth.
Three, was it dentist?
Yes.
Okay. Never know.
But I mean, this is, this is in, in Brookfield. So I mean, we, we have this awful, awful reputation because we're making the papers, we're making the, the radio. And the, and the other thing is that Franklin residents go to their workplaces, go to, you know, when they go to friends' houses, that's what they're talking about is all this craziness that goes on that they don't deal with, with in their suburbs at all. Many of them haven't even seen their city hall inside or gone to a meeting. And Franklin residents are in here all the time. So something, The Rock has caused so many problems and it seems like everything is done for The Rock and nothing is done for the citizens and the taxpayers.
All right. We got to finish up. We're going to take shelter. We're not going to take shelter. Just finish this. Three minutes. Thank you, Judy. All right. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, we're going to close Assistant Common Period this time. Moving on to Item B2, a proclamation and recognition of municipal judge and former mayor Fred Clements. Is Mr. Clements here? Fred, are you out there? He's in the hallway? Somebody want to bring him in? If he's not, I'll simply read it and we'll move on. Or you guys can all stay. We'll be done in five more hours.
Five?
Seven.
Five?
Fred Clements, are you here? Mr. Clements? Okay. Not seeing Mr. Clements, but I will read this. If he comes in, he comes in. Whereas Frederick F. Clements has completed an incredible term of his life of substantial service to the public, assisting and always working towards and protecting the health, safety and welfare of the community, its residents and its guests. As the City of Franklin Municipal Judge for May 1st, 2006 through the month of April 2024, please do not talk, just exit. This is also important. This is one heck of an achievement this gentleman did for our city. Whereas prior to serving the public as municipal judge, Frederick F. Clements served as the mayor of the City of Franklin for the vast majority of the years from April 1990 to April 2005, which he received resolutions from the Common Council commending him and in his honor for his service during which years Franklin was one of the fastest growing municipalities in the state of Wisconsin. And whereas Frederick F. Clements, Fred additionally, through all the years has been serving humanity in his practice of law since his graduation year of 1976 from Willamette University College of Law and is continuing his practice and service for the people. And whereas in addition, whereas in addition, in addition, in addition, three times, Fred was a pivotal founding member of Volition Franklin and Fred is now serving as a business sector partner representative for Volition Franklin, a positive force for changes in the Franklin community. A coalition that works to prevent alcohol, tobacco and other drug use, but educating young people to make informed decisions in coordination with the City of Franklin Health Department to support the efforts to prevent and reduce substance misuse among youth. And whereas Fred has spent his life in the service of others and continues to do so. Now therefore be proclaimed that I, John R. Nelson, Mayor of the City of Franklin, Wisconsin, on behalf of all the citizens of Franklin, hereby express our gratitude for the incredible over 30 years of public service received upon the work of Frederick F. Clements and in recognition of honor of Frederick F. Clements and appreciation for the services he continues to provide. Good luck and Godspeed, Fred, presented to this community and the people of the City of Franklin this 7th day of May 2024. If he is not here, let's please. We'll be sending this over to Fred's house. He's got to pay a dollar for delivery. Okay, so we are approving now going to C, approval of minutes, regular Common Council meeting of April 16th, 2024. Is there a motion?
Who to approve?
Second.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As have it. We have no hearings. Under Diaz and David. E. Edward, organizational mayor commission appointments, 1, 2 and 3. Anna Lee Bennen for the, for the library board. Eric Heinrichs for architectural board. Jim Witt for Board of Public Works. Is there any action to take, separate action?
No.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have a roll call on this, please? Madam Clerk?
Alderman Holt.
Aye.
Alderman Iken.
Aye.
Alderman Assan.
Aye.
Alderman Day.
Aye.
Alderman Barber.
Aye.
Alderman Craig.
All right. Excellent. Six ayes, no noes. Motion carries. Under F's and Frank, letters of petitions, we have none. Now we'd like to take a 10-minute break before we go into G1. So we are going to be shutting everything down. 8:01, please be back. We'll go nine minutes. We'll go nine minutes. Four here. Green Arrow, Alpha. It is now 8:10 PM. City of Franklin Common Council meeting will resume. Item G1, request council approval to award a 2024 fire department source capture vehicle exhaust system project to Hastings Air Energy Control. Who's got this one? Chief here, chief? Good evening and welcome, sir.
Good evening. All right, thanks. So we had received a federal grant to replace the vehicle exhaust systems at all three of our fire stations. Because it was considered a public construction project, we did have to put it out for bid. Thanks to the assistance of Tyler from the engineering department, as well as my staff, we did prepare a score sheet because of the special, specialized nature of the project. We wanted to make sure that the bids met our technical specifications, as well as the specifications for service on the system, plus give us a good price. We had two bids from vendors we previously worked with. Amazingly, they came in within $187 of each other, which I guess shows that the bid process works. The, the lower bid actually did not win because they did not meet the criteria of having a service center within the state of Wisconsin, and they did not have references locally. The, the winning bid, just about all of our neighboring departments use them. They have a local service facility in New Berlin and are a better value, and they'll give us interoperability with our neighbors.
Excellent.
That's what we're recommending we accept.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Do you got that? First and second? Hold for Barber. All's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As have it. Thank you, chief, very much. Looking forward to it. Excellent job. Great, great work. G2, a resolution posing conditions and restrictions for the approval of a temporary use for the Franklin Field 2024 baseball season for property located at 7035 South Ballpark Drive. Good evening, Mr. Martinez.
Good evening. Thank you. But this is the temporary use application for the baseball season at the Franklin Field Stadium. So this temporary use permit application has been reviewed by staff in the previous years according to the resolution that approved the site plan for the stadium. However, due to noise complaints, staff is referring this application to Plan Commission for a decision on the, actually the temporary use permit and to the common council for a decision on the sound level for this event. So just to clarify on the noise regulations of the city, so they are located in two places. One is the Unified Development Ordinance, the noise section, that has a sound level of 55 decibels for the P1 district, the parks district, that is the underlying sounding district for the PDD for The Rock. And the other location is the municipal code that states that for sound levels between 70 and 79 requires a permit issued by the common council. So the staff identified two, two options for the consideration and decision of the common council. First one will be the Plan Commission approval condition upon a level of 55 decibels as measured at the property boundary. And the other option is sound levels between 70 and 79 decibels that requires approval by the common council, and that's in accordance with municipal code section 183-41A2. In addition to that, in the recommended conditions on the resolution, there is the, that the That city development staff recommends that the applicant must submit a noise monitoring report as required by condition of approval number two of ordinance 2019-2368, no later than 90 days after the staff, after the start of the 2024 Milwaukee Milkman baseball season. That's a condition that was established at the PDD but has not been met in the recent years. So staff recommended that they submit that noise monitoring repair, prepared, prepared by an independent consultant. And that recommendation is also in the road, road sport complex sound study. Okay, so in the package, you'll see the resolution and condition number three, it can have the two options for the decision of the common council tonight to kind of select one of these options recommended by staff. I acknowledge that the both, both options are even, are still higher when compared to the recommendations of the sound study, that is 50 decibels for daytime and 45 decibels nighttime. However, we acknowledge that enforcing that those levels will need an amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance that has the levels of 55 decibels at the property line.
Thank you. Discussion starting with Alderman Barber.
I'd like to make a motion to allow the sound level of 55 decibels as presented.
Second.
We have a first and a second. I'm sure we're gonna have plenty of discussion, so you got the first and second. And discussion Alderman DeSohn and city attorney.
Thank you. So first of all, just a point of clarification, Mr. Martinez, the only thing that this particular item is addressing is the sound level for the baseball games and the allowance of the temper, the food, whatever the list is here of the food and beverage sales, the food trucks, the candy, that, this list here.
That goes to Plan Commission.
That goes to Plan Commission.
This way.
So all we're talking about tonight is the sound level, and then, once that goes to Plan Commission, is the council, what the council votes on tonight, is that locked in for Plan Commission, or is this gonna be up for debate again at Plan Commission of the different levels of sound?
The municipal code is the common council that may authorize a higher sound level.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with, with the 55. I think that that is more than adequate, given some of the information that we received this evening. As indicated by our police department on numerous occasion, they need a hard number to be able to, to enforce any sort of overages. And it seems as though that was about where things were coming in over the weekend, so I am, I am comfortable with that. I vote for now.
Well, before we move forward, just so if we're referring to what was going on on Sunday with that sound check, and Alderman Craig was there as well, just the ambient was low to mid 50s with nothing going on. And that's a big concern that if, oh, it said 56. 911, 911. No, no, that's not how this is gonna roll, and it can't. That's not realistic. So I'm just cautioning, cautioning. If there's a comment on that, if not, I'll move over here.
My comment is that that is the number that's in the document, and as Mr. Martinez pointed out, if we're going to adjust it, whether that be higher or lower, that's a completely different issue for a completely different day, and I don't think we're prepared to come to that discussion today. Maybe I could be wrong, but again, that is the number that, that is there. I'm not arguing for or against whether it's a reasonable or unreasonable number with, with sound monitoring. I could put the sound monitor on on my phone right now, and my voice is louder than 55 at the moment. I get that, I do. But that's the number that's in the code.
Mr. City Attorney.
I worked with staff in regard to this. Mr. Martinez, you didn't mention our discussion about alternate decibel limits, right?
Well, there, there are two options, the 55 or could be up to 79 as approved.
And our discussion started after you drafted that. And the short version of multiple communications in that regard over the last number of days...
It was like 24 hours, wasn't it? Wasn't it yesterday when we met, or?
It was more than that.
Was it?
But it involved going back to the records, including the planning, or the zoning administrator back at the 12/120 December 1st, 2020 common council meeting, and speaking in terms of decibel limits, and speaking about the table with the 55 decibels. Former zoning administrator noted that planned development districts are not listed in the table, so any enforcement of sound is only with respect to the receiving district. And I understand that planned development district number 37 does say otherwise. You know, in addition to what is set forth within this planned development district, that provision in the Unified Development Ordinance would apply, or the P1 Park District would apply Unified Development Ordinance-wise. But then he also notes in his report to that common council meeting that... It's only with respect to receiving district, or if no noise limits are included in a specific planned development district ordinance, and then noted that as with planned development district 37 and a different plan that it was. So you have that 79 decibel in the planned development district, and it's mentioned briefly in the planned development district and in staff determinations the last number of years on this subject. The thought was, well, that needs some alteration. So in addition to going through the planned development district provisions, and also the details in regard to development agreements, and the fact that that developer had agreements with Milwaukee County, including one which provided the, on the noise and light exhibit C addendum, that, yes, for, for noise, it cites the section 183-41 in the municipal code, but then it also adds as another basis upon which noise may be regulated, and this is an agreement with the developer, and it says, "With approval by the City of Franklin, such other applicable noise or light standards as may apply for a particular event or specified uses within the project boundaries." My thought was, that tends to open the door for discretion, and within the agenda packet, you reviewed all the decibel records through the years, et cetera, and what the amounts were for baseball games, et cetera. And so the thought was, and there was also discussion about this Sunday sound testing meeting with the neighbors, and that perhaps something in the 60 decibel area realm would be appropriate, that based upon these altering, different provisions stated there, as well as the Milwaukee County Sound Study, noting that excessive noise be a public nuisance which should be addressed, and that the common council previously authorized staff and the Unified Development Ordinance update consultant to work together to update the entirety of all the noise, sound regulations within the Unified Development Ordinance and municipal code, because it's related, that all those things considered, that perhaps a 60 decibel limit would be applicable, and there were above 55 decibels on that Sunday testing it, from what I heard.
So, if I may, the meeting was yesterday, and I understand with the turnaround time, there was no change. There was conversation about what would be appropriate in terms of the sound testing that occurred on Sunday. I know, I understand that nothing went over 60 decibels, and that was one of the numbers that staff felt would be more appropriate to be the maximum, would be 60 decibels for all of the games. However, common council always has discretion, so you can always pick whatever you want and, and go with that, but staff had recommended the, either the 55 or the 60.
Alder, are you revealing? Alderman Eichmann and Alderman, excuse me, Alderman Holfer.
Thank you, mayor. Mayor, for clarification purposes, I'm not sure that all are aware of what occurred on Sunday when you met with the aldermen of the district, District 6, which is where The Rock is located, of the sound check that you did with the neighbors on Hawthorne Lane. So if you could maybe enlighten us a little bit more. I know about it, a few of us know about it, but I'm not sure if the full council is aware of that on Sunday.
Sure.
To my understanding, it came about late on Saturday afternoon. So council may not know, was my first point. I also would like, if you wouldn't mind, otherwise I'm happy to, explain the changes that The Rock has done to implement the noise, and that Van McNeil was there. Sorry, the outburst in the audience. And that Van McNeil was there, and the microphone was being tested, if you want to go into some of those details to make councilful aware. And thirdly, I ask if it holds that 55, which I do not agree upon. As mentioned, sitting here, me talking right now is probably at about a 56, 57, wouldn't you say? I can get louder, but...
Goes right in my ears, like 90, but...
That's what it's supposed to do, mayor. And if we do go forward with this, I would like to request that we do a roll call vote as well on this. So with that, I will yield.
Are you looking for me to, to just do a brief overview of what Alderman Craig, and if I miss something, he can chime in?
Please.
So, sure. So it was brought to my attention, there's gonna be a sound check on Sunday. I learned about it sometime on Saturday, and went there to the Knolls driveway, their property, and the Knoll residences were, in past times, we've gone there and the, the neighborhood has showed up there, and, and Mike Atkins from The Rock was there as their, basically their chief sound engineer. He's got a vast experience in that. We were there, they, actually, what you just referred to as their announcer was in the stadium doing his announcing, what he normally would do. The levels were set. We, we, we got an education on different frequencies of different, you know, levels of who attended, level of attendance, and there was set, there was a sound setting that was locked in that can't be adjusted. It can't be raised, it can't be anything. The neighbors that were there appeared satisfied with what they were hearing as far as how loud things were going, and as we were assured there that, that noise was locked in, and it wouldn't get any louder. And I thought it was a very, very productive, a very successful meeting. I thought it was a reasonable amount. You know, could you hear it a little bit, but it was a, a huge improvement from last year. Alderman Craig?
Yeah, there were two things to also make note of that were points of discussion that I think are relevant to the council to be made aware of. Number one was that it's still a work in progress, and Mike even admitted to that in the conversation on Sunday, that Naomi Knoll had some issues with the base levels, and Mike said that he would kind of tweak that so it wouldn't be as intrusive. So it isn't, I don't think that, I think it's still something that we can still have conversation with, that it isn't something that, nope, this is it, there's no discussion, nothing else is ever gonna happen. I think that Mike was very much open to conversation beyond that. The second thing that he made a, a point of, to note was that the system for the ballpark, which anyone that comes in to plug into, does the level that is being set as far which anyone that comes in to plug into, the level that is being set as far as the ceiling for volume, that's going to be what it is for anyone. So if the Savannah Bananas come to town again, that they won't override what Mike is setting as his, the loudest that it can go, graduation, things of that nature, those things are not going to be the one offs, you know, even though we see here on the listing of the temporary uses where graduation is listed as an item, that it won't all of a sudden hear the roll call from, you know, Franklin, Franklin High School and all the seniors that are going to walk the, and grab their diploma, it's not going to be much louder than what the announcement will be for the, for the lineup for the Milkmen. At least that's what we have been told will be the case moving forward.
Thank you. We got Alderman Holfer, then Alderman Barber, if you could activate your mic. Mike?
Mike, Mike? Couple of, couple of questions here in comments. So whether it's 55 or whether it's 60, is there a duration? Is there, I mean, I don't want to be dealing with average volumes or is it one time it's over and it's 61 and it's a violation or how is that going to be handled and what's the instructions to the police department for enforcement? And if this is for the baseball games, is this also including then fireworks? That would be at those levels? Because it's pretty hard to do it at that level. But I know there was supposed to be requirements, no salutes and all of these other things for, for the fireworks, that needs to be addressed. And I don't know where we stand with regards to the sound monitors, are they all up calibrated, monitoring and calibrated and able to monitor in the locations that they're supposed to be currently?
I'm actually going to defer to Alderwoman Eichman as they discuss that in the Licensing Committee meeting as far as where they're at with, Mike Atkins talked about it because I only caught part of it, as far as the monitors and when they're up. And I understand there's an agreement that was recently signed, but for sure, your first point, no fireworks are not followed under this, I mean, that's, no.
That is addressed in the packet.
But it's not.
Within the staff notes.
55 and 60, but I'm saying, but if you, Alderwoman, if you could.
I'll have things to add, Mayor, but I'm going to give the floor over to Alderwoman Day for that.
Well, hold on. So then, right, so, whatever, I'll see if I peed up. So Alderman Holfer, to your point, and I wish we had more of an answer, I know there was an answer because she was in there, perhaps Alderwoman Day has more insight on exactly what Mr. Atkins said about where they're at with the sound monitors and the agreement, which I believe was just signed and then coming forth on our IT and that's still moving forward, but we just had some light today. Would you like to touch on that?
Yeah, I have answers to, to some of it, not all of it. So we talked a little bit at License Committee about sound monitors. I asked about the placement, the calibration and the sound monitoring database and if it was up and running at the city. And Mr. Atkins stated that they did come to an agreement, a signed agreement with the company whose name is escaping me right now, that.
Clifton Larson or, no, it's Larson Davis.
Larson Davis, thank you. And that it was signed and supposedly sent over to the city yesterday or today and then it was, that is where, that is where it is. He didn't have any other information on that because they had signed it, paid for it and sent it over here. So to me, that indicates that the system is not operational yet because I wouldn't expect it to be operational in, you know, a day. He did not answer the question on the calibration part, so I do not know when the last time they were calibrated. I don't know if anybody here has that answer, but he did not allude to that piece.
And we will have, excuse me, we will have proof of calibration and that's going to go up on the website when we have that. That's 100%.
My understanding is calibration is a little bit more time consuming than what maybe others would imagine and certainly what I had imagined it would be. So it is a, taking a speaker out and I don't know, I guess, taking it to this company and then they run their tests and what have you. And then after several days, I think maybe like 10 or something like that, I'm just trying to go off of memory, then they return it. So the thought process was if we are going to do that, that we would have it one speaker at a time until everything is, is calibrated.
And the West speaker would be the first one. Alderman, do you still have the floor this time?
Oh, no, sorry, I was just getting.
Okay, and you stood, back to you.
Thank you for the information and I hope you can appreciate it's difficult to be asked to make a decision on something when city attorney added a lot of information that wasn't in this and then, you know, we have information from license and all of that stuff, so it's nice to have that information so we can make the right decision. I do know that Conemawak, they have to have everything calibrated on an annual basis, so we'll do the same thing. And then following up with that, where are we with when the monitors are up and running for public access? How is that process coming?
The signed agreement today is news to me right now, so it's a little bit slower than I was hoping for, but we are getting there. If there is a signed agreement, I will work with our IT director to ensure that it's on our website, that access.
But in time for the first game?
Well, okay, so Alderman, I agree with you. I agree with you, I don't like the timeline, this is exactly what we all talked about in fall, I hope I'm not yelling, that we wanted to make sure that we had all this stuff in line by the first pitch. And here we are, we don't have it ready by the first pitch and you're asking the exact same questions I was hoping I wasn't going to hear four or five months ago. And now we're here asking them because we don't have the answers. And now we're slowly getting things trickling in that we don't have ultimate control of. So I agree with you and I guess it gets to a point of, well, you know, we can't guarantee a timeline, we can guarantee how we want to get something done, our plan to get something done, but this timeline, which is loaded with obstacles apparently, that I didn't think existed five, six months ago, but we are trying and we're doing, as soon as we get information, we're giving it to the council. So as soon as we get it, we give it. Nothing's being held back, nothing's, this is a whole different regime. So as far as I'm concerned, whatever we get, we give and everybody's included as much as we can as far as in real time.
And to be clear, I'm not trying to lay blame, I'm just trying to make sure.
Well, I'm frustrated as you are.
I'm just trying to make sure that we get this done and that if we pass a resolution that we're going to uphold our ordinances that as we're moving forward, we're upholding the ordinances. That's all I'm asking.
I agree. Madam Director of Administration?
So part of that conversation that we had yesterday was directed towards your question of duration of noise over the limit and staff had recommended five minutes and not 30. Is that correct? Wasn't that part of our conversation?
However, the ordinance doesn't provide like a duration.
Right, right. So in, in the absence of the ordinance providing a duration, again, this is just a recommendation from staff to Common Council who makes the conditional approvals or decisions and determines all of these nuances. That was staff's recommendation.
Alderman Barber?
I made the motion to set it at the 55 decibels so that we can eliminate the 70 to 79. I also am getting a lot of information this evening that I was not privileged to or had heard anything about prior to coming to this meeting. It might have been talked about with some of my colleagues and stuff, but I'm probably like some of the others that have not heard any of this. So my, my intention is to set the limit at 55 and hope that the council will vote on that because I think that's where we need to set a baseline. Anything can change over and above that, pieces can come together and they can be fitted in as best as can be to adjust and tweak based upon what the residents say and what makes sense as a common council. So for that reason, I'd like to call the question on the motion.
Well, can, okay, well, we got two more if we can go first, so we're going to have.
I called the question on the motion.
Okay, well.
A roll call, but I have an edict.
I know, we're looking to get through this. I understand the question, okay, you're calling to the question. Mr. City Attorney, could you respond to that?
Can you push the button?
I know. I know Alderwoman Eichman, we're going to have Alderwoman Day first and Alderwoman Eichman and we've got Regula. In the, in the meantime, while he's researching that, if that's okay. All right, Alderwoman Day?
Sure. So one, one question for the Director of Administration. So you mentioned with the calibration cycle, sending one in at a time because of the duration it takes, which I think makes perfect sense. So in my experience with having to deal with equipment of a different nature that needed to be calibrated, we always had a backup so that we always had the minimum amount of monitors going at the same time. Do we have a backup sound monitor so that if we send one to be calibrated, we're not down to two sound monitors, we still would have three?
I don't have that answer, but my guess is we do not and that is probably why he had stressed that we would be sending one out at a time.
Okay, so I would, I would strongly encourage just to look into that option and have discussions with the developer about having a spare because if one for calibration or one breaks or something, you know, we don't want to go down to two, you always want to have a backup. So just a discussion point to have at some point in the near future. To Alderman Barber's point and motion about the 55 decibels, I do believe somewhere there is a statement that we are supposed to be revisiting all the sound levels every year, something we have actually never done. And so this might be a good opportunity to set a level and a duration for the overs because I would assume that staff as well as police would like to have a duration to go with that level and then we revisit it as needed or in the one year timeline to make sure that it is the best measurement for everybody involved. Those are my points. Thank you.
Alderman?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to simply make a statement, Mayor, that on every License Committee meeting, the Alderman should be finding that there's a back key notice on it. So anyone is welcome to join us in licensing. This evening, none of the other Alders joined us. It was myself, Alderwoman Day and Alderman Craig who are on the License Committee meeting. So anybody would have been welcome to join that meeting earlier and learn a lot. I was actually surprised that we didn't have more people present. But that'll yield.
Mr. City Attorney, activate your microphone, please.
Motion to call the question is the same as a motion for the previous question, it does require a second. And then it's not debatable.
Okay, so we've got, we'll go back to, we've got a motion, we've got a first and we have a second, right?
And it was a second.
We need a second.
It was not a second.
But there was, I'm saying his initial, original motion, he had a first and a second. Then he did, he called it a question, he made that, but he did not have a second to that, but I'm just referring back to his original motion.
All right. With regard to us call the question, it requires a second and then for it to prevail, and there's no debate, for it to prevail, it requires a two thirds vote.
Okay, so Courtney, if you could activate your microphone, okay? So why don't we just go back to the original motion and do a roll call on that? Don't? Well, then it's your call, Mr. City Attorney, but we got to move this along.
Well, is there a second to the call?
There is a motion and a second on the floor, you can ask for the vote.
Well, that, right now was my plan right now, but now we're saying we're going to call the question and start muddying the waters with a second which we didn't have on the call of the question. But we have a first and a second for the motion originally.
I'll rescind my motion. I'll rescind my motion for the call.
For the call, excellent. Okay, let's do a roll call vote on the first and the second.
Alderman Craig?
Aye.
Alderman Barber?
Aye.
Alderwoman Day?
Aye.
Alderman Hassan?
Aye.
Alderwoman Eichman?
No.
Alderman Holfer?
Aye.
Five ayes, one no, motion carries. G3, a resolution to issue change order number two for the water transmission main contract A along South Lover's Lane in the amount of $40,000 to Dorner, Inc. Mr. Morrow. Is that on?
Thank you. You may recall, we've had a change order one for this project. We had to lengthen the length of the bore because we had to deepen the bore based on
Bring that closer to your mouth, please, sir. With the rain, we've not heard nothing.
Based on the WD and R requirements, we had a change order one because we had to deepen the water main and we had to lengthen the bore because to save some trees. So when we did that, they found a totally separate or totally different soil substrate and it was almost water. It was, it was very liquidy. We had our inspectors keeping track of the time as it took additional man hours, it took additional time, it took additional materials. We negotiated quite lengthy with the contractor, it is a change of conditions and so we're going to recommend it, issuing a change order for $40,000 for all the additional work that it took to, to make this happen.
And is this work that's already been done?
It is. It was, it was while they were out there, you know, they, as they were actually doing the work, it actually started like blowing up if you, water started coming out of the hole instead of actual soil. So they couldn't keep the hole open, so it took a lot more bent night to pump into it, took a couple more weeks extra to do it. So this is a in process project that we had to have happen.
Motion to move.
Madam Director of Administration?
I just wanted to point out that it was done without the council's approval. Obviously, we should not be doing that. Just wanted to point that out.
This is a lot of money.
May.
Alderwoman Eichman?
Thank you. How are we to get council approval if they're out on the job site and something of the nature occurs? There, I mean, we'd have to have a special meeting right there and then. So in an instance like this, how were we to get the council approval when something happens and the job is, the job is being worked on?
Well, it's, Mr. Morrow stated, go ahead.
When it's possible, I mean, we do bring it forward to the Common Council like we did the first change order before they were getting ready, but this one is just, it's changing conditions and he's asking for more money for that effort, so.
Okay, so we have, Mr. Holfer?
I know it's not a big difference, but in the letter here, it says their additional costs were $38,750, change orders for 40. What's that?
So the 38 was the subcontractor and the, the prime contractor had to do additional funds on top of that additional effort to work with them. So that 38,000, that's actually even after all the negotiation, they did donate some time and even at the end, we come to discount their price another 10%. So that's what that 38,000, that's for a subcontractor, but then the prime contractor, which is Dorner, was, also had to spend time out there and he had some other costs involved and, and everything that, that went into making that a lot longer than it should have been.
Thank you. Gee, we've got a motion on the floor, Alderwoman Eichman, is that correct?
Correct, name of the motion, Mayor.
I'll second.
First and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, I have a motion carries. G4, Franklin Senior Citizens Travel Program update for the 2023 year end. Madam Director of Administration, I see KH on the bottom there. I mean, there's no action being requested, it's quite, it's got everything down.
It's a report and I would like to invite Mr. Basil Ryan up if he would like to speak to their senior travel program and provide the report.
Being as shy as I am with public speaking of the client this time and suggest that in my July update that they will take on the topic of the short call that we're going to have this year and that way there.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Ryan, absolutely.
I would move to accept and place on file.
Second.
We have a first and a second to remove or to accept and place on file. Any further discussion, say none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, I have a motion carries. Item G5, a resolution to award Landmark Structures 1 LP a change order number one for elevated water storage tank, contract B, at 8120 South Lover's Lane, tax key number 801-9986000 in the amount of $67,932. Mr. Morrow?
Again, this is a situation where contractors out there working, it needs to answer right away. We did get them to pause, we had a geotech firm come out. Situation when they started rolling the surface, if you're familiar with what a proof roll is, it's where you take out a loaded triaxle and you, and you see where it bounces, if you will, and then you dig out the bad. if you will, and then you dig out the bad spots and you replace it. Well, it was more than just a few bad spots, the entire site was, was messy. In fact, the triaxles got stuck a couple times and had to get pulled out. I've never seen that happen in my entire career. So it's just poor soils out there. We had a geotech firm come out, do some analysis, and gave us about three or four options of how to build it up to, to make it so it'll support construction equipment out there, and we're going with the cheapest option that they provided. So, we're basically leaving. Fortunately, the final design, it's about a foot and a half taller than the existing grade, so the cheapest option was just to go ahead and put rock in there and build it up, as opposed to trying to, trying to excavate the old stuff and remove it. Again, this is the least expensive option, but it is a more $67,000.
I'd like to make the motion.
Okay. We have a first. A second. There's a first and a second for discussion. Alderwoman Day?
I just have a question on this, and this might just be me not really knowing as much about this type of work, but given, reading the, the action sheet, and it talks about, given the wet spring and note, and noting some of the other issues with the wetlands going on, is this something that the, the company that was out there could have or should have foreseen before wheeling out and getting stuck?
So, if you recall what the site looked like when the project was designed, you couldn't even walk through the site. We actually had to bulldoze through, and we, it was, it's very clay soils. I mean, it was, we, we made an estimate of what was there, and the geotech work that we did have, we did have some geotech work done for the tower site, that was provided the contractor, but this is just totally different.
Yeah. I guess what I was getting at is, you know, if there's any liability on the contractor, like, why we have to, just, to me, as a layperson reading this, it seems like, should you have done some sort of test or something before, not once, but twice, wheeling your truck out? I guess that's, I mean, it is what it is. It happened, and we have to, you know, we have to fix the issue. I get that. I just, in this particular instance, I'm, I guess in the other one, too, a little confuzzled why it's all on the city to have to put these change orders.
Yeah. Why is it on us? This is insane.
Because we provide geotech reports with the best information we have available. That's what the contractor uses to put his bid together, and he makes assumptions based on that. So it's a change of conditions, like the, the subsurface boring, just completely different in this situation where, you know, again, everywhere else around Franklin, I've never seen a triax get stuck on a proof roll test. It happened here, so.
Alderwoman Ickman?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, as Alderwoman Day mentioned, what's done is done, but going forward, as mentioned, Glennis was not in the contract. Can we add these type of clauses and items in the contract, just so there is nothing unforeseen?
Well, so-
So that the geotech firm then would be responsible upon incurring those costs going forward? Can we just make a contract that's linked, maybe have the city attorney or an attorney look it over, and put all possible clauses of situations that may or may not happen, especially when we're working in areas of a wetland?
Sure. So I guess I would say we could do that, but what you're doing is you're adding in a lot of extra gamble to contractors. So that's why contractors give you the lowest, best prices based on the available information. So when conditions aren't the best available, then, then the owner typically shares in those costs. So we could build all those into it, but then every contractor would add 20, 30% to their bid, and you just have a lot of higher bids overall.
Thank you. Mayor, can we ask Channel 58 or whomever is in the hallway interviewing people, it's loud, it's hard with the rain pouring down, as it is, if they could please kindly, with all due respect, move a little bit more down the hallway?
Mr. Fuchs, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Holfer?
So, did they do borings where the truck got stuck?
So, the geotech firm did somewhat shallow borings, you know, not as deep as we did for the water tower, but they did come out and do some soil samples and looked at the soil for various spots. I don't know how many spots they looked at, but they did hire a firm to come out and look at that.
Then my, my next concern would run into issues with the tower, with any auxiliary building with access drive. Is it gonna be one that's gonna be going up and down?
Yeah. I don't want another, what was the name of the road before the rock? Yeah, I don't want that again.
I just mean, is this gonna be for the rest of the project?
Well, so this is, this is really the site work that they're working on. You know, this is, maybe we'll run into it when we do the park development, but for the actual tower site, this is really the tower site that we're looking at. We will be talking about it issue later, which could help some of the cost savings, but.
We've got a first and a second. Any further discussions? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. G6, designation of official newspaper. Motion adopting Resolution 2024, designating an official newspaper.
So moved.
Second. First and a second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. G7, substitution of alternative insurance coverage provisions in the contract for water main extension on the east frontage road of South Lover's Lane Road from South Phyllis Lane to West Hurt Place with AW Oaks &amp; Sun, Inc.
Vote to approve.
Second.
First and a second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. G8, authorize a professional services agreement between the City of Franklin and Conica Minolta Business Solutions, USA, Inc., to provide document management system, DMS software, licenses, scanners, and implementation services funded by account number 41-0144-5841. Good evening, Director. You have the floor.
Good evening. I'll try to-
Uh-oh.
Maybe dead by now. I'll try to be brief on this because of the night. This is to be implementing a approved 2024 capital project to implement a document management system to start replacing our old and aging Microsoft File Server. The difference between document management system and a traditional file servers, instead of putting all your files in folders and understanding the context of what's in that file, either by the document's name or by the tree of folders above it, instead you tag the information on the file as it's created, and then it also does an OCR and a full text indexing, so it helps making searches and finding files much easier. This project was originally going to start it for the entire city, but we shortened the scope on it. Main reason why is square nine changed the licensing model. So instead of getting concurrent usage, so we would have 30 concurrent users that could be shared by all the departments, they changed it where it has to be a named user. So because they changed their licensing model was one of the main reasons that we shortened the scope to be one department. But it also is a very complex project. A lot of municipalities fail when they bring in a document management system, so it's a good thing that you, you start small, and then you grow out and add additional departments as needed for it. So we're looking at the software to implement the document management service, conversion services to take all the files that are on the engineering department's file server and move them into the document management server, buying a batch printer instead of using the photocopier that can scan in large amounts of documents. There's a interesting chart in one of the document proposals by Conica Minolta, if we wanted to scan all the documents. There's 1.5 million pages of documents right now in the, in the, just the engineering department's file archives, and they broke it down into a table on what all of those documents actually are on it. And they're looking at taking the bulk, like, all the site plans, and scanning them in themselves. So one of the first things we want to do is buy the scanner, so we can immediately start scanning documents in bulk right now, even when, even when we're turning around and implementing the document management system. And then anything left over that we have in the project funds, we would then send over to Conica Minolta, and they have big, huge, professional scanners, probably the large format blueprints and such things that are not easy to scan ourselves, and then have them professionally do it. And then, as we start moving along, then we put money into later years to turn around and start scanning any additional archives that are too bulky or where we can't handle it ourselves.
I'd like to make the motion.
Mr. City Attorney?
Mr. Petalski, I recall amongst 10 million work things, sending you an email that I had, that I had issues with in the contract, and on the run, trying to accumulate all the documents for all the meetings to get to here today. I didn't catch that one to bring along.
I do have it in the resolution that, the proposed resolution is to finish the contract with technical corrections under the approval of the city attorney and director of IT. So I just got the latest red lines per year comments today from Conica Minolta on it. I haven't had a chance to see the documents, so we're still working on the contract.
They did respond.
Yep. They did respond, and I have another set of changes.
Okay. And I don't have the recollection if those were severely necessary, absolutely required or not, so, see what we can do and do it right.
So, we have a first and a second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. G9, a resolution authorizing certain officials to execute a first amendment to the subdivision development agreement for Cape Crossing Subdivision Phase I between the City of Franklin and Cape Crossing LLC subdivider. Who is taking this? Is there a motion on this?
So moved.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. G10, a resolution authorizing certain official to accept a warranty deed for dedication of Outlet 4 of the recorded Cape Crossing Subdivision plat, document number 11356311, tax key number 8901067000.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. G11, authorize the Director of Administration and Finance to access current financial procedures and policies and implement industry standard best practices and project management protocols.
Yeah. So, this is-
Madam Director of Administration?
This is something that the Director of Finance and I have talked about quite a bit recently. We've realized that our protocols are rather incomplete and outdated, and we would like the authorization to review what we currently have and make recommendations for changes.
Makes perfect sense. Alderwoman Ickman?
Thank you, Mayor. In the past, Mayor, when you were an Alder, wasn't this the practice that we had with the former city administrator, that she did just this, right?
Yeah.
So, may I ask, then, what the changes of, from what was in place?
Oh, no. I thought you meant just doing administrative policies. No. What, what was the last time a policy, finance policy was brought forward and then it was tabled twice? What was that, like, 2014, 2018, or something like that?
2014, 2017 was a purchasing policy that was brought forward. We've had some updates and amendments to our debt policy and investment policy since then, but we don't have a proper purchasing policy in place, a bidding policy in place, just getting the City of Franklin up to speed with other municipalities, with an actual financial policy manual that outlines all of the financial policies that we have, administrative policies that we have, and just making sure that we are adhering to them when we do actually implement them.
I appreciate the clarification. Thank you. With that, I would like to make the motion.
Right. Waiting for the yield. So we have a motion at this point. We have a motion. Is there a second on this before we go into discussion? No second yet? Okay. Well, we'll go into discussion now. Mr. Barber?
Would this be in accordance with the generally accepted accounting practices that are existent? You wouldn't be doing, I mean, you'd be keeping that in mind as well?
Yes. We'd be using all of those and just implementing them into the policy.
Correct.
And any changes that you're gonna, anything you're gonna think about doing, you're gonna run past the council?
Yes.
But they're all gonna come to the council for review and acceptance. It's just giving us the opportunity to look into different avenues, different methods of policy management and all of that to, to bring some forward.
In favor, then I'd be in favor of it, given the fact that we do have that look at what you're doing, and I hope you do well with what you're gonna be doing.
Yes.
I'd like to yield.
Alderwoman Day, then Alderman Holfer?
Thank you. Fundamentally, I don't have an issue with anything that you said you want to do. I guess I just, I don't know that it really needs formal council action. I mean, I-
I wasn't a courtesy.
Both of you to look at the things and make the policies. I know we're woefully behind in updating, you know, things. So I said, I don't, I don't have, I mean, and if it, if it needs be a vote, that's fine. I'm just saying, I don't, I don't think you need a vote from us to, to look into this and bring us changes. With that, I'll yield.
Thank you. Yeah. It's, it's more of a courtesy and also a blessing, you know, that we'd like to do this, and here's the reasons why, and that obviously we would want to bring it back and have the council's formal blessing on whatever policies that we end up either assessing and then determining need to be updated, or policies that need to be added.
Authorize, I think, make a motion to authorize that at this point, so it can be moved forward and it's voted upon?
I had the motion.
It wasn't seconded.
Right. I know it wasn't seconded, but we're still in discussion phase. Mr. Holfer, you have the floor next?
Thank you. As I first read this, I kind of sensed a feeling of some urgency, which I wasn't quite understanding, and your explanation tonight hits me differently than when I read the council action sheet. Could you give me at least a couple of examples of what you're looking at, inefficiencies in fiscal notes, budget confirmations, and project management issues?
I'm gonna look at this, because my memory is not very good today.
Me neither.
Very little sleep. So, basically, we have noticed that of many of our active projects, we have significant overruns. We've realized that we have inefficiencies, incorrect information, or not vetted information, not full information in our fiscal notes, and, and then as part of that, what we've realized is that our policies are woefully outdated and inadequate, so we just like to be able to bring forward policies, updated policies, that are more in line with today's best practices and industry standards. So that way, obviously, our goal is to hopefully avoid future project overruns and insufficient fiscal notes.
Well, I guess, part of my question is, why we're getting the incomplete or inaccurate information? I mean, who's, who's collecting that? Who's monitoring it? You know, are these things being brought up at staff meetings that, hey, you know, I'm looking this over, and I think this, I need to know this, or what's the process of this? And then also, and I'm all for constant improvement. You have to do that. But I'd also like to have some understanding of how in-depth this process is, how long you think it might take, and do you see there being any fiscal implications in it? In other words, cost for us, you looking at software, what's?
No. I've been collecting information from, what is it, the UW Extension on government. They have a substantial amount of information on standard policies.
The Wisconsin Municipalities has a lot of resources for us, well.
Right. And then I have also reached out to surrounding communities to see what they have, and I actually was told the same exists in our neighboring community, that they're very outdated, and they were just about to do the same, so maybe we could compare notes, is basically where it ended. I, you know, in terms of who's checking this, it's supposed to be department heads. But that's also part of what we would like to do, is make sure that we have more checks and balances, more processes in place to deal with emergencies and that sort of thing.
Well, but somebody's got to be working with those department heads too, and validating and asking if there's things missing, why is this missing, and it's a whole process. So I hope it, I hope it helps. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Alderman Craig.
Just a couple of things. You mentioned about wanting to make things more in the modern day. What are some of those items that are so far behind that it's glaringly obvious to you two that saying like, man, this is a really bad process, and this, this structure that we're having to work through is very archaic, and we need to really, you know, either, is it a streamlining thing? Is it just a pro, like accounting practices have evolved over time? Or what, what is kind of the driver behind a lot of this? Is, I mean, you don't...
I would say the accounting practices have changed dramatically, especially in the last 10 to 15 years, but I think it's important to note that the city of Franklin has very vague policies or non-existent policies. For example, you know, back in 2014, to me would be a simple purchasing policy that was brought forward, was tabled, wasn't brought back until 2017, and the city of Franklin has no purchasing policy whatsoever. I know Alderman Barber has brought it up to me before, a bidding policy. We have no bidding policy. Our procurement policy only is for any federal grants that we may be awarded. We don't have a simple procurement policy, so it's hard for the council to make decisions or department heads to make decisions when there's concern about what needs to come forward, what doesn't, when do things need to come forward, when do they not, at what point does things need to be approved at a council level, or can department heads make those decisions themselves? And I think that that has been brought up to Kelly and I a lot, is do I need to bring this to council? Do I need to bring this to council? It's over a certain threshold, do I need to bring it to council? Well, should you, yes, there's no formal policies that says that you need to, though, so us just getting on the same page again with other municipalities, and so that you guys as a whole can make better decisions.
More well-informed decisions, but also, you know, just when you have a policy and you have steps to follow it, it really takes the unknown out of everything and the guesswork out of, out of everything.
Sure, so going back to the procurement policy as far as that goes, is that something where it will be, is it just more for a check on that sort of stuff, or is this going to make things more efficient as far as where engineering says, hey, we need X, and you know what, it doesn't hit a certain threshold, so we're just going to do it? Or is it a, where they would have to, instead of coming from council, it's got to go to the director of administration, goes to finance, and it's still going to be four steps in order to get an item, but instead of coming to council once every two weeks, it's a, oh, well, I just need to send an email to, you know, Director Brown, Director Hirsch? Like, what, what would be the, the kind of the fix that we'd be seeing as far as that goes?
Guess I'm not really sure if we have that answer right at the moment, not that we couldn't talk about it offline and then come up with some thresholds to put into the policy.
Because I, like, my, my concern is that we're like, like, on paper, yeah, great idea, like, let's set, like, rules for the road, but then when...
You don't want to slow things down.
Right, is it going to be, the new rules are going to make it harder?
I wouldn't want it to change, or I wouldn't want to implement anything, yeah, that would slow something down.
No way.
Or, or challenge decisions, right, no.
I think it's more about backups too, you know, backup information. It's like when you go and you pay your water bill, you have a little...
I got a well, so.
Okay, well, when you go and pay your We Energy bill...
Oh, there we go.
There is a portion of that that you were able to encourage to submit with your payment that's called a backup, and it would just be nice to have some of those pieces in place so that way we can say, we are doing this, we're assured we're doing this, and everybody's on the same page.
Okay, so we had a first and a second, correct? Memory escapes me.
I made the first.
So we don't have a second yet?
What, is this the motion that was not passed?
Well, we had a first, we just didn't have a second.
And we didn't have a second.
We did not have a second.
And I thought it was put aside because there wasn't a second.
Motion to authorize the director of administration and finance to access current financial procedures and policies and implement industry standard best practices and project management protocols. And we have a first by Alderwoman Eichman.
So I have a question, and does that mean they're just going to, they're going to research this and implement it on their own, or are they going to report back that, well, that's the way it read?
Well, let's get some clarification.
I answered this.
I know.
Yes, Alderman Barber had requested this information, and so did Alderwoman Daye. Yes, we're going to bring it back and get council input.
Yeah, each, each initial policy that we discuss, get department heads' consideration, everything, every policy has to come before common council anyways. It was just allowing us to do this.
That's what I could hold on until I had some clarity on it.
Thank you.
Now we've got clarity, crystal clarity. Are you good with being a second?
Aye, fine with being second.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. G twelve, lots of color, an ordinance to opt out of the extended hours closing times and to retain the closing times currently in effect pursuant to Wisconsin statutes for alcohol beverage license premises in the city of Franklin for the days related to the Republican National Convention to be held in City Milwaukee pursuant to subsections 64C, sub four, sub B three, sub C three, and sub Diaz and David three of 2023 Wisconsin Act 73.
Move to approve.
Second.
First and a second, all who's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, as have a motion carries. G thirteen, an ordinance to amend ordinance 2023-2569, an ordinance adopting the 2024 annual budget for the capital improvement fund to provide $37,710 of park improvement appropriations for the electric service upgrades at Lyons Legend Park.
So move. Second.
Question.
We have a first, we've got a second, we got discussion, Alderwoman Eichman, then Alderwoman Daye.
Thank you, Mayor, being that this is in my district. The project is not in the 2024 budget. However, there should be no adverse effect on the budget as the offset of rebate funding has been provided. The anticipated breakdown is as follows. The contribution from Civic Celebrations Fund is unknown, and then I guess my concern is the very last sentence on here. The council may need to consider decreasing future budget obligations for the civic celebration, or, and this is big, or increase taxpayer contribution to the celebration fund. Though it be increasing taxpayer money to the fund in order to provide electricity for the civic celebration event, which reading in here, did I read somewhere that it costs $5,000 for a generator versus putting electricity in? I guess I just need some clarification, explanation, because I am not for raising taxpayer money for this project. I'll yield.
No, look.
The, the next item talks about the cost of $5,000, what it costs for fuel, and then I don't know, even know how much it costs to rent the generators. So we spent $5,000 in fuel, so there's, there is a savings. We're, we're spending money upfront so we can prevent having to bring in generators and supply it with fuel and all the other headaches that go with keeping the Fourth of July issue operational.
What would the savings be?
So there's at least $5,000 for the fuel, and I don't know what their, what their budget is for the renting the generators, but they rent a couple of generators, I believe, and I'm sure that's not cheap.
It just seems like there's unknown cost. So it's worth for them to have this and for them to understand, them in, in the civic celebration commission, that we're likely be decreasing their future budget, that we're raising taxpayers' money for this. That's how, again, I read the last sentence on page 327. So please explain to me clarity of what I am not seeing in this, because it clearly states increase the taxpayer contribution to the celebration fund.
So what I can say is when this was first brought to me, there was conversation of $30,000 to come from the fund balance of the Civic Celebrations Fund. I had a look back at what was left over in that fund and determined that it probably wouldn't be feasible to use $30,000, $30,000 of their fund balance, because it seems that in past years, they have run over budget. And my concern was that they were going to be over budget again this year. I had brought it to the director of administration's attention, that as the civic celebrations comes forward, presenting their revenue and expenses to the common council and asking for a contribution from the general fund, this last year, they asked for an increase in a contribution from, I believe, $11,000 to $30,000, which was approved. But they still, in 2022, they ran over $12,000 over budget, and then in 2023, they ran almost $29,000 over budget. What is presented to you does at the bottom state that their budget does not include DPW labor and staff timing, and that is a significant cost that is not necessarily brought forward to the council. I assume it's because at the time, Mr. Bergner doesn't know what those costs are going to be, but that being said, with such a deficit over the last couple of years, it just didn't seem feasible to use fund balance when it seems like they may be using it this year. That being said, I put that last sentence in there as a caveat to a conversation that the director of administration, myself and John Bergner are going to have in May as to their budget constraints and the fact that they have been running over budget and how he's going to ensure that they are going to stay within budget this year without having to raise the taxpayer contribution even more than the $30,000 that you guys have already agreed to, because they can't continue to run a deficit without having that additional funding.
So not to confuse, G 13 has the increase the taxpayer, and then what you had just mentioned, the $5,000 in field generators in course of the event, is a whole different item. It's G 14, the next item. I understand how they coincide together.
Yeah, because you need to have the budget amendment to, to appropriate those funds for the next item. Again, that they wanted to use $30,000 of their fund balance to support this project. After talking with Public Works, he was going to use the $30,000 out of his street lighting fund this time, and we had discussed maybe seeing where the Civic Celebrations Fund is at the end of the celebration, and if there is any funds that could be transferred over, we would at that time. That's why I put that it was unknown.
Thank you.
Before Mr. Holfer, just a comment, and Mr. Morrow chime in here. So what this does, does this not then eliminate the use of renting generators?
At this stage, I don't believe it does. It greatly reduces them, because I believe that there's still a future, and I apologize, I'm not real intimate. Kevin has been working this out with John. There is a second phase of this project sometime in the future, but they would like, but this will take care of a majority of that side of the street. I don't believe it takes care of this side of the street.
He did say that it would be a future project to do the, the east side, I believe.
So, so this will, this will take care of everything on the, was it the east side of, of Legend Drive, but not on the city hall side of Legend Drive. So there, there probably will still be, need to be a generator for, for some of it, yes.
And Mr. Holfer, then Alderwoman Daye.
Yeah, this, this would be a help. The committee's done some things over the last two years to save dollars. They used to spend an inordinate amount of money on ice. They went and bought some coolers that they cut the cost of ice dramatically if they can save on $5,000 of fuel per event. It's important to note that the majority, the funds that pay for that whole celebration don't come from the city, all right? It's what they sell in beer and food and, and the vendors that are there, all of that stuff, and then, and 40,000 plus in donations from businesses. And then you turn around and they're being billed for all of DPW and, and police department personnel, their wages and their benefits, their retirement, all of that stuff we were paying for out of the money that we're raising. So the city's actually getting a pretty good bargain, because there are other municipalities that don't charge their committees any of that stuff, so I would think that this would be a good deal.
Agreed. Are you yielding, sir?
Yes.
Alderwoman Daye.
Just two questions. Is there any other, outside of civic celebration, any other event or thing that the, that the city does or anything that comes into the city that this would also benefit besides civic celebration?
Maybe, I don't know if Christmas in the park would, would, would use much of it, but that might be the, I don't know.
Okay.
Could be new events, sorry.
And then, I guess, for, for future considerations, since it isn't here and we talked about it a little bit, it's a little tangential, but given the, what sounds like some budget constraints for civic celebration and running overages the last few years, we just approved to spend on the drone show, which was...
And I, I brought that up back then, too.
In hindsight, I kind of wish that I had this two weeks ago, because that might have made that decision a little bit different in my brain, but neither here nor there. But, okay, thank you.
The only thing, if I remember correctly, when I brought up my concern about the budget then, was that Mr. Bergner did say that I believe he's trying to get sponsors for it, so.
Alderwoman Eichman, do you have closing thoughts before we move forward?
That's a good point of what Alderwoman Daye asked, and to my understanding, and Alderman Holfer, you're that automatic representative on Civic Celebrations Commission, right? Because I was personally told by someone on the Civic Celebrations Commission that there will not be any Christmas events going forward. Is that true? So then it would only be one, used one time a year?
I don't know. We don't know. That's, that's not sure.
I couldn't lie down.
Who knows? All right, you still have the floor, ma'am?
I have.
Okay, we've got a first and a second, all as a roll call vote.
Please.
Aye.
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 Excellent, six ayes, zero noes, motion carries. G 14, a resolution to award electric services upgrades at Lyons Legend Park, 8030 South Legend Drive, tax key number 8029995001, to J Miller Electric, Inc., for $68,330.
So move.
Second.
We have a first and a second, so let's do roll calling as well, why not?
Alderman Craig.
Aye.
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 Alderman is son.
Aye.
Alderwoman Eichman. Aye.
Alderman Holfer. Aye.
Excellent, six ayes, zero noes, motion carries. Ah, let's see here.
Good news is we had budgeted $120,000, so we almost have that.
Sorry, Mr. Morrow.
The good news is we had worked with the contractor, and they had a $120,000 budget item for us, and they wound up not bidding, but these two came in at very competitive prices. And there's a possibility we can possibly get it for this July 4th.
All right, well, moving forward, before we go into the number of closed sessions, why don't we do H's and Henry licenses? Oh, I'm sorry.
I would like to see G 17 before we go there.
Okay, let's check out G 17. I know, a lot going on right now, and if he's on text messages waiting, he's lucky he's not here, wait on a text message. Okay. So, are we moving over to G 17? Is that what everyone's looking for?
No.
Well, then what did I just...
If we're going to do licenses, we should do 17 before licenses.
That's, I agree with that.
So then let's just go in order and go to 15.
Well, I'll tell you what, why don't we do this because of the, and I agree with you, to go to 17 and then go to licenses, okay? So what we're going to do is we're going to go auto ward, we're going to G 17, okay? And then we're going to go to licenses after that, then go into 15, 16, 18, and so on and so forth. Okay, G 17, a motion to enter closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State statutes 19.85, sub one, sub E, to deliberate upon the tax incremental district number five development agreement shortfall and payment in lieu of taxes and related agreements, provisions, and the negotiation of provisions and terms, and the investing of public funds in relation thereto, for competitive and bargaining reasons and pursuant to Wisconsin State statutes 19.85, sub one, sub G, to confer with legal counsel for the common counsel who is rendering advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which is likely to become involved, and to re-enter open session at the same place thereafter to act on such matters discussed therein as it deems appropriate.
So move.
Second.
We have a first and a second, roll call, please.
Alderman Holfer.
Aye.
Alderman Eichman. Aye.
Alderman is son. Aye.
Alderwoman Daye. As always, no.
Aye.
No.
Four ayes, two noes, motion carries. We're slowly creeping into closed session.
Jason, when you grabbing those stuffs?
Potential motion, potential motion would be...
Can you hit his mic?
A motion...
Wait, start over.
Hold on, sir.
There you go.
Go ahead. Mike, turn ears on, please. Go ahead. Mike, turn your ears on, please.
A motion to direct the legal counsel to commence litigation on the subject matter by filing a summons and complaint in court tomorrow, May 8, 2024.
Okay, you're good. Okay, that's the motion. Is there a motion on it?
So moved. Second.
We have a first by Alderman Craig, a second by Alderman Barber. This will be a roll call, please.
Alderman Craig.
Aye.
Alderman Barber.
Aye.
Alder Woman Day.
Aye.
Alderman Hassan.
Aye.
Alder Woman Eichmann.
Aye.
Alderman Holfer.
Aye.
Six ayes, no noes. Motion carries. We are now going to take a eight-minute break. 10:54.
Mayor.
It's 11 o'clock. We're back on record. Going into item G as in George, 15. A motion to enter in closed session pursuant to State Statute 19.85, sub 1, sub E, for competitive bargaining reasons to deliberate and consider the excessive 2023 taxes has been claimed submitted on January 29, 2024, for the property bearing tax key number 847-0084-001, and governmental actions in relation thereto, and pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, sub 1, sub G George, to confer with legal counsel for the common counsel who is rendering advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which is likely to become involved, and to re-enter open session at the same place thereafter to act on such matters discussed therein as it deems appropriate. Is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
We have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Holfer.
Aye.
Alder Woman Eichmann.
Aye.
Alderman Hassan, absent. Alder Woman Day.
Aye.
Alderman Barber.
Aye.
Alderman Craig.
Aye.
Five ayes, no noes, one absent. Motion carries. We are slowly creeping into closed session. We ask that everybody exit again. I'll wait for Nenok to give me the green arrow. Uh, it's 11:06 PM. We are back in open session. Is there a motion? Would you read one, counselor?
Potential motion is a motion to deny the claim as presented.
So moved. Second.
We have a first and a second. Uh, let's go with roll call, please.
Alderman Craig.
Aye.
Alderman Barber. Alder Woman Day.
Aye.
Alderman Hassan.
Aye.
Alder Woman Eichmann.
Aye.
Alderman Holfer.
Aye.
Excellent. Six ayes, no noes. Motion carries. Excuse me, man. Exactly. Item G-16, he was here. A motion to enter closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, sub 1, sub G, to confer with legal counsel for the common counsel who is rendering advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to the Greg Neesonbaum versus City of Franklin excessive tax assessment claim, and to re-enter open session at the same place thereafter to act on such matters discussed therein as it deems appropriate. Is there a motion to go into closed? First by Barber.
Second.
Second by Craig. Roll call, please.
Alderman Holfer.
Aye.
Alder Woman Eichmann.
Aye.
Alderman Hassan.
Aye.
Alder Woman Day.
Aye.
Alderman Barber.
Aye.
Alderman Craig.
Aye.
Six ayes, no noes. We are going back into closed. We have a motion on that.
So moved.
Second.
We have a first and a second. What?
No action to be taken.
Okay, well, then we'll just say no action taken. We'll move on to the next item. Thought we had to say something on that, that we all agree there's no action. Apparently not. All right, now we're going into item. I thought we were going to go licensing now.
Yeah.
H. Henry?
Yeah.
Who's got, who's leading this charge? Alderman Craig, lead the charge, please.
So licensee committee met earlier, much earlier this evening. We had two operators. One that needs to up, Bradley Mazer needs to update his application.
Sorry to interrupt you, Alderman. Correction of application.
Correction of application, excuse me. And Stephen Piantic, all were approved, I believe.
For two of Stephen Piantic's.
Yeah, one is the new license and the second is a renewal for the 24, 25 operating year.
The bottom three are approved.
No.
Those are just the operators. Those are just the operators.
Hold on a second. Alderman Craig, you've got the floor.
Recommending that those, that those operators are approved. No?
No. I thought we were holding.
Hold on. What are we doing with Bradley Mazer?
I would approve that contingent on him correcting his application.
I'd like to see him correct his application.
We're approving pending correction of application.
Yes.
I know it's getting late, but let's just keep going. Stephen Piantic, what are we doing with Stephen?
Approve him.
Good. What do we do with the other Stephen Piantic?
That is the same person, and that is the renewal for the next operating year of 24, 25, since his new license will expire June 3rd.
Excellent. So let's go with these three first. All right, then we're going to go back.
And then we'll do the other, the special events then.
Correct.
To finish up.
So we have a motion to approve on those?
Motion. Second.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I say a motion carries. All right. Want to stop at the, start at the top with Waha?
Sure. First, Waha Restaurant is, uh, looking to get their license for operation of 23 to 24, to serve beer and wine. And I think we'll just do that one separate, and then we'll do the individual events then, yes?
Sounds great. Is there a motion to approve that one?
Motion to approve.
Your second.
Second.
Shell's second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I say a motion carries. All right. Root River?
Root River Center with Root Fest Live Music Event. Make the recommendation to approve. So moved.
Okay, we, do you have a question, Alderman Barber?
Yeah.
Go ahead, sir.
What were the hours of operation for that? Do you remember?
I believe they were, were to end at 10:30, I think.
Yeah, end at 10:30, at 6:30, 10:30.
Okay, that's fine.
Same as last year?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so we have a first and a second by Alder Woman Day. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I say a motion carries. Okay, Scottish Festivals, Inc.
Uh, the Scottish Highland Games returns back to Croatian Park. Make the recommendation to approve. And I will make that motion.
A second.
First and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I say a motion carries.
Rock Ventures LLC is an entity change. And it's more of a paperwork and accounting practice. So make the recommendation to approve.
Second.
First and a second. All those in favor?
Right.
Aye.
Any opposed? I say a motion carries.
Next, Rock Sports Complex fireworks displays after Milkman Games of 2024. I believe that will be a recommendation to approve.
Second.
First and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, so now we're going to go with.
Wait a minute.
Wait.
What?
Clarification. Point of, how can you make the motion and then vote no?
Because I can make the motion to start the process.
You can do the process, so.
Just because you, motion or second doesn't mean you have to.
Exactly. So we have a first and a second. And now we're going to go with a roll call vote.
Alderman Craig.
No.
Alderman Barber.
No.
Alder Woman Day.
Aye.
Alderman Hassan.
No.
Alder Woman Eichmann.
Aye.
Alderman Holfer.
No.
What do we have?
Four.
Four noes, two ayes. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Four noes, two ayes. Motion fails. Rocks, now we'll go. We'll go with Rock Sports Complex Summer Concert Series, 2024 season. Mr. Craig, continue.
Sure. That one is, I'm assuming, to be recommended to approve.
So we've got a first to approve.
Second.
We have, we have a second, a first and a second. We're going to go roll call again. Well, further discussion, Alder Woman Day.
I would like, I realize there was already a motion on this. I just wanted to put this out there for consideration. A condition for the approval, if the person making the motion is amicable, to a condition of approval being that the sound monitoring system is installed operational and has gone through a sound check prior to the first concert.
Could be amenable to that?
And I will keep my second being amenable to that as well.
Excellent. We got a first and a second. Further discussion. Alder Woman Eichmann.
If, unless, I don't have the discussion on this item, but I would like to have some discussion that was not given on the item prior before we go into the next item.
Okay, for right now, I'm not sure what all that means. Summer Concert Series is right now, so we have a first and a second. This will be a roll call vote.
Alderman Craig.
No.
Alderman Barber.
No.
Alder Woman Day.
No.
Alderman Hassan.
No.
Alder Woman Eichmann.
Aye, yes.
Alderman Holfer.
Aye.
So, well, the council.
That's why we haven't had a discussion prior.
Well, we had, we're discussing on this item first. We're discussing this item.
Right. There's no discussion given.
We had four noes, two ayes. Motion fails.
Unbelievable.
But.
It's done.
Mayor.
I guess it's, well, I guess it's done.
No, it's not done.
Well, it's voted on, four to two.
It can be rescinded. If we could have discussion, which I've been asking to have discussion for both. I feel there was not enough discussion for two major items.
Well, there could be a proposed other motion back. Mr. City Attorney, could you expound on that?
Well, the subject matter was denied for that particular motion, which was contingent on the sound study.
Right.
There could be a motion to make it more specific, such as setting the decibel limit after the sound study is completed, or something akin to that.
May I say something?
Hold on one. City Attorney, slow the floor.
Well, that's my, just in general, it would be a different motion with a different contingency, or with different contingency to approve.
Okay, because there was a contingency put on by Alder Woman Day to have a sound system.
But it mentioned nothing about decibel limits resulting from the sound study.
Okay, we'll, Alder Woman Eichmann, and then back to Alder Woman Day.
Thank you, Mayor. I hold firmly, incredibly firmly, on retracting back to there was absolutely no discussion given. I will retract back to earlier in the meeting when I did bring up every single License Committee meeting has this thing on the bottom called a bad key notice that all Alders can attend licensing committee meetings. I will retract and repeat my verbiage from earlier with such a very, very, um, important License Committee meeting tonight that's hit the media, social media and so forth. The only Alders that were present were the Alders that had to be there tonight that sit on Licensing Committee. The other Alders who quickly voted against these events tonight could have learned quite a bit more by sitting in at License Committee. I mean, and then to have no discussion and simply vote no when no conditions were talked about. I mean, we had lengthy discussions with those present for the applications tonight, and we weren't even allowed to have discussion before we were voted on these items. That's just very confusing. That's why I'd like to make a motion to possibly have these rescinded because how can you make an educated vote when you don't have any facts upon anything? It wasn't even discussed for the fireworks because we had no chance to have a discussion, that there's a 10:00 PM hard stop for fireworks, that the Franklin Fire Department approved it. I mean, it was just bing bam vote without having any facts based upon your votes.
Can that be brought back for discussion in a, in a motion, if there's a second to it?
If there was a motion to reconsider, it would have to be made by someone who voted in the prevailing side. And part of adding contingencies, as I stated, the applicants were extremely cooperative at the License Committee meeting with regard to the timing and willingness, even stating they would not agree to a specific decibel limit, but it would be strictly up to the city to set that. And they understood that, and that's how they said it should be done.
So with that statement, I'm an Alder Woman Day, I have something.
I am. My understanding, Mr. City Attorney, is that in order to bring it back, it would have to be done by a person that was in the majority vote to change.
Correct.
And then would that person have to have a proposed motion? Or are they just stating that they would like to bring it back for discussion?
Reconsider. Was the last time we were reconsidering.
Strauss.
It just brings the motion back up. If the motion.
Good call.
From this chair.
If the motion to reconsider.
Set my own precedent here.
Reconsider passes, then. Then the original motion comes back up.
If the motion comes back up, yes. So, yes.
In the meantime, Mayor, may I say something? We've asked the applicant to sit here for hours. License Committee meeting started at 4:30 PM. It's what time, 11:30? They've sat here this entire length of time because we asked them to in License Committee so that they could be asked questions and so forth for those who chose not to join us at the License Committee meeting earlier. So they're, they're right here to ask any questions.
Alder Woman, so I'm on board with what counsel said, and the prevailing vote, which would have been the side of Courtney Alder Woman Day. She resides to bring it back for consideration discussion. Then we open it up, we can have them come here and answer any questions from counsel, and then go to a revote or remotion. You still got the floor?
I, I hold firm on, and I'm very confused how votes can be made so, so quickly and swiftly when there's discussion that needs to be had. And the applicants here, I mean, how, I just.
Emotions were made and the vote was called.
Emotions were made, the vote was called, and that's how it went.
Correct. There was no opportunity for discussion, which isn't fair to the applicant or any applicant.
Who's to decide what's fair?
Right, so let's.
It's procedural.
Hold on, so we're, we're checking on a procedural thing right now. Probably going to be bringing it back, hopefully, and then there'll be discussion and then a revote. New motion and a vote. We're waiting patiently.
It has to be voted on once you.
Correct.
Once you chose to rescind.
Correct.
Your vote didn't have to be brought on.
As a motion to bring back, and then discussion and a motion to move forward.
Doesn't need to be made automatically.
Correct.
Waiting on me?
Mm-hmm.
For what? I already said, I already said what the process would be. Someone who voted in the prevailing side would have to make the motion. It has to be seconded. And then if the motion passes, then the original motion questioned, the vote on the original motion is struck, but the original motion still before the counsel then.
Okay, Alder Woman Day, do you have a motion?
Reconsider.
Just to reconsider.
I have, I have a different motion. I will make the motion to reconsider. Can I second that?
Yes. Seconded by Alder Woman Eichmann. Just on the reconsideration, Alderman Barber, can you turn your light on, please?
Of the vote. Of the vote on the Summer Concert Series regarding the Umbrella Bar.
I thought this was the fireworks. I still will hold my second, but I thought we were retracting back to the fireworks.
No, second.
I can't do that one.
So, right now, we're going to Summer Concert Series.
Okay, I'd like to call the applicant up since...
No, we have to vote.
Hold on, we have to vote first, Alderwoman, on the reconsideration. We have got a first and a second. All those in favor of the reconsideration, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Roll call, please, on the reconsideration.
Alderman Craig?
No.
Alderman Barber?
No.
Alderwoman Day?
Aye.
Alderman Hassan?
Aye.
Alderwoman Eichman?
Aye.
Alderman Hofer?
Aye.
Four I's, two O's. Now it's open for reconsideration. Now what is the motion to open back up for discussion?
Well, the motion pending is the original motion, which was a motion to deny.
No, 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 approve.
The motion was to approve, and that failed, and now we have a motion to...
With the mention of the sound study, et cetera. Okay, so can we discuss that?
So now we're opening up for discussion at this point, correct?
I, I have a question for the attorney.
Alderwoman Eichman.
Attorney, I thought it was going to be discussed as mentioned before we got to this point about the 169.2. Where, where is that discussion, may I ask?
This has nothing to do with that, I don't think.
Okay. So everyone's clear on that? Are there any questions from any of the Alders on that?
Well, hold on. Hold on. So, right now, we're talking, we have an open discussion right now, okay, as far as Summer Concert Series, all right? So it's been brought back for discussion. So Alderwoman Eichman?
If I saw the floor, I'd like to call the applicant up.
Hold on a second. Mr. City Attorney, you've got the floor, sir.
What's your, what does the mention of Section 169-2 mean?
I rescind that comment.
Okay. Well, my, as I stated earlier, the applicants provided a lot of information regarding maintaining sound studies, et cetera, et cetera, and related that to the Sunday sound study that the mayor attended.
Sound check.
And perhaps counsel would want to hear those facts from the applicant representative.
Mr. Atkins, please come to the floor.
Perhaps suspend the rules, or, well, I don't even know that you have to.
Well, I'll make the motion in case to suspend the rules to have the applicant.
It's licensing, we don't need to suspend them. Have a seat right there, Mr. Atkins. Thank you for your patience and joining us tonight. So I would like to start with the questions, okay? And this, and then it'll go towards, and it's just, so make sure it's nice and close and it's working.
Yes, sir.
State your name and business address for the record, please.
Michael Atkins, 7044 South Ballpark Drive.
Thank you. So, one of the questions with the Summer Concert Series and the concerns were about the sound system. Could you please give some detail about the, the changes to the sound system moving forward, and a timeline?
Yes, sir. So, as, as required by Milwaukee County, we are installing a dedicated sound system at the Umbrella Bar to comply with the Milwaukee County guidelines, or I guess mandate on that. That system will start installation this week and will complete no later than May 24th of this month.
Thank you. I'm going to yield for now. Mr. Hofer?
Is there a projected decibel limit that, that would be capped at?
That's not up for me to determine.
So then my next question would be, what's the most efficient way to have a reasonable cap on the sound limit?
May I?
Please.
Yes. So, similar to, to how we've just conducted for Milkmen baseball games, we will do a sound check, and any interested party that would like to be privy to that is welcome to join us and offer feedback, and we will set a limit that cannot be exceeded. So, very similar to Milkmen, there is now, there's even a PIN code lock. So unless you know the four-digit PIN code, no one's going in there and changing any settings, the Umbrella Bar sound system will be locked to whatever settings are determined as well.
Just to be clear from, this is my personal point of view, and I've had this conversation with the neighbors that if we make improvements, it doesn't necessarily mean they won't hear anything, but they won't hear it at a level that's a nuisance and intrusion. So I'm not expecting that nobody hears anything, but I just want to make sure that it's a reasonable level.
Sure. You, you know, as it, I can speak to Milkmen because we just did that sound check. While, while it is audible, it is not above the noise floor. So when I say that, the, the noise floor would be what a, what you hear without anything else going on, whether that's nature, or wind, or, or any number of things that could be going. And when we look at our sound meters and we, we introduce a new sound into that, if, while you can still hear it, if that sound is not above the noise floor, it's not registered.
Thank you.
Mr. Barber?
Would you be open to the same 55 decibel limit that we just talked about in, earlier this evening?
I, I was not involved in those discussions, so I can't comment on that.
Okay, just say, would you be interested in the 55 decibels?
Measured at what point?
The lot line.
Well, I, I can tell you from just completing the, the Milkmen sound check, and, and I could even pull up our sound monitoring right now, I can tell you it's above 55 with nothing going on, so...
It's just ambient.
I, I'm, I'm not willing to, to state a decibel limit.
But would you be willing to lock it in at?
I mean, as far as the city goes, that's up for you guys to decide what your noise ordinances are. That, no, I understand that, but you're now proposing that it might be different, or that you would, would put something out there different for this event? That's not up for me to dictate to you what that, what that is. I mean, I, I can...
You're here to give input.
And I am giving you input. I'm giving you, you input to say that...
Not going to answer.
For the council to meet the conditions.
Alderwoman. So Mike, Alderwoman Barber, you still have the floor?
I'm, I'm just asking you what would be acceptable to the Rock people, and moving forward, where, where would you like to ballpark it?
So if it were up to me, I would encourage the council to look at other municipality sound ordinances and adopt something that would be, I guess, in line with, with, with real-world values.
That might take too much time to come up with that at this point.
Alderman, do you want to yield for a minute? So Alderwoman Day can...
Go ahead.
Alderwoman Day?
Thank you. So, obviously, need to clarify some things here. So, my initial vote on this was in due large part to the conversation that just took place here. I was not confident in the setting of the level, given the timeline that was proposed and the concert series coming up. So, what I'm comfortable with potentially when we go to vote again is potential motion, not saying I'm doing this at this, at this precise second, but to table this item until the confirmed completion of the sound system at the Umbrella Bar is installed and operational, that a sound check has been done, so that numbers can come back to the council, so we know exactly what that sound level is, and that that sound check is done with residents and the alder of the district and whomever else wants to be there, as well as the online data recording from the sound monitors is operational on the city website, so residents and the police can see in real time what is happening. So, that's where I stand right now. I think there's too many unanswered variables that need to be answered, so...
I could second that.
So if, if, if that is how I would be able to move forward, otherwise I would have to go back to my original vote.
Okay, we've got further discussion. Are you yielding for right now?
Yes.
Alderwoman Eichman?
Thank you, Mayor. Alderwoman Day, may I ask you, when you say table this, our next meeting is May 21st. Mr. Atkins clearly told us in licensing, as you heard, that they're expecting to have this done 5:24, and the first Summer Concert Series is 6:01. So what do you suggest we would table this to, or are you suggesting that we hold a special meeting?
I am suggesting that it is tabled until those items are completed. If it happens after June 1st, it happens after June 1st.
We may have to have a special meeting. That's a great, that's a good point. You still got the floor?
I am basically speechless right now. So I'll yield.
Alderwoman Hofer?
To be fair, they've known, they've known that they were supposed to have the sound system in from day one. It was years ago. I yield.
Alderwoman Barber?
I can support that motion, and I would second if it was made.
Going back to Alderwoman Day.
Okay, so I will make a motion to table this item until such time that the, the developer, or the, I should say, the applicant, the Rock Sports Complex can confirm that the sound system is installed and operational, and they've done a sound check, that they can provide data to us on decibel levels, and the city can confirm that the software is operational on the, on the city website from the sound monitors.
Second.
Okay, we have first and a second. We've got some discussion. I've got some, City Attorney's got some. City Attorney?
I was going to suggest that instead of using the technical word adjourn, just say put over until the time, because that says when you bring it back, and you don't get into that realm of debating about what Roberts means. As amended. And that then, subject may come back for a special common consideration at a special common council.
So is that your amended motion?
My second.
If needs be.
Okay. First and second, continued discussion. So I guess I've got some concerns with, well, number one, if the speaker has to be sent out to be calibrated, I mean, this is, I'm, I'm hearing this is a, is this, this system's getting calibrated, we talked earlier, does that have to be sent out? Does somebody come here, want to get the system calibrated so it's...
May I speak?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, let's use the, the correct terminology here first. Speaker produces sound where, where a decibel meter is actually a microphone that receives sound, so I just want to make sure we're, we're being clear about that. So, one of the city's asks of us was to have the documentation of, of, of certification of the sound meters available online. Field calibration can be done, and has been done. It was done, I believe, April 1st, field calibration was done, but a certificate of calibration is not, not given with a field calibration. It's only done with a lab calibration. In order to get lab calibration, the monitor does have to be taken offline and sent into Larson Davis to be calibrated, and then they will issue certificate of calibration.
So, it had field calibration in April?
That's correct.
It passed field calibration?
That is correct.
Just, we don't have the higher-level certification calibration document unless it's sent into a company?
That is correct.
And...
So only the manufacturer can lab calibrate it.
Okay, lab calibration. And is this something where all three speakers or all three components can be sent in at one time and they come back? I mean, obviously, this is a timing thing.
I, I would ask the city to give guidance on that, because we could send all three in at the same time. It is a 10-day business day turnaround for them to take them, calibrate them, and send them back to us. That's per the information they've given me. Or it can be done systematically, one monitor at a time, so that the entire system is not offline. So I, I would ask that the city give guidance on that, on how they would like us to complete that.
Well, I have my thoughts, but counsel, wanted to go, Alderwoman Day?
I don't believe I included the calibration in my motion for that.
But you're saying you want it up and working on the site? If, if we're good with the field calibration for now...
I'm, I'm okay with the field calibration for now until we work out how we would.
Okay.
That kind of goes into the conversation I had with the Director of Administration before about how to rotate it around so we're not down on...
Excellent. All right.
Uh, no, there is, there is not a spare.
Alderwoman Barber?
Is there, is the field calibration information available?
I don't know what information you'd want to gather, you know, other than to give you an invoice, I, you know...
That it was done and it, it's, it's functional?
Uh, yeah, I can provide that information. I mean, basically, what happens, you have a vendor come out, they say, hey, it's field-calibrated, and they send us an invoice, so...
As long as, to Alderwoman's point, as long as we know that it is accurate, if it's been field-calibrated, and we can put at least that for now on a site, so we know that we've got, we've, we've done our due diligence as far as the field calibration goes, I think that would suffice. Okay. So we, going back to the motion, we've got a first, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries.
Last item.
Last item, Alderman Craig, you've got the floor.
Rock Sports Complex, Tacos and Tequila/Phase Fest Musical Festival 2024. I'm assuming the committee recommends the approval.
And is there further discussion?
Yes.
Alderman Craig, did you say you assume? Does that terminology you used, did we, did we under approve it or did we not approve?
Alderwoman, we have the floor right here, and the floor will maintain control. So, right now, we have further discussion. Alderwoman Barber?
In your approval, or, you know, assumed approval at this moment, was there any discussion about language and the subject that the neighbors should not have to tolerate, the kind of language that went on at the last time? They shouldn't, children should not be subject to it, the family should not be, their guests should not be subject to it. So what stipulations are in place to safeguard against language?
And I'll defer to members of the Licensing Committee to comment on that. Mr. Craig? We were told that they have changed the direction of the speakers from pointing towards home plate to now being set in left field, correct? Left? If you don't mind coming up here, sir, take the center chair, just state your name and business address.
Good evening. My name is Joshua James. I am the General Manager of Social Ops Entertainment, Senior Vice President of Social Ops Entertainment. So, one...
Give me the address of the...
Yes, sir, sorry. 12920 Metcalf, Suite 170, Overland Park, Kansas, 66213.
Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you.
So to the question of the language that we had touched on earlier?
Absolutely. I was, to be quite honest, I was, I was shocked by this question. The artists that are performing actually performed at the Super Bowl this year on, in front of 70 million-plus viewers. I, I understand, but they still perform there, and, and if you look at other similar concerts happening in the Metroplex, in this area, SZA is a hip-hop artist that's performing at Summer Fest the same night of, of our festival. So I had, that festival's actually, or that show actually is a all-ages show. Our show is a 21-plus show. Our demographic is predominantly 25 to 54-year-olds. I think our, our team has done a great job at adjusting and making as many changes as we possibly can. You had mentioned the rotation of the stage. So in all of the minor-league ballpark stadiums that we go into, we set the stage in center field, pointing back towards home plate, as you mentioned. This is the first time that we've rotated the stage, and it's a feat in itself to do so, setting it up in left field, pointing towards first base, pointing in the opposite direction of the concerned neighborhood, which is going to help tremendously.
What about the speakers? How, how are you going to ensure that the neighbors who are not buying to an adult age aren't going to be subject to this kind of language?
Absolutely. The speakers aren't even pointing towards the neighborhood, they're pointing away from it. You'll be getting, like, it, I wish I could pull up the site map for you guys to review it, it's, it's part of the application, but it's, it's pointing in the opposite direction. Therefore, the way that sound, and, and Mike Atkins is a, is, you know, far more experienced when it comes to explaining sound than I am, but it's, it's not going to be an issue.
What would be a legitimate recourse if that is overlapping and bleeding over into the areas?
I, I, I think we address it, you know, immediately during the, during the show. We could, you know, make adjustments as, as needed.
One second, I'd like to ask you a question.
Okay.
So... So when we were out there Sunday, Mr. Atkins, you know, you had the control of the laptop and it was a sound system. Is this sound system independent of what's currently there? So you're bringing in your own sound system?
Absolutely. Um, every, uh, festival event that goes into a ballpark stadium, they don't use what they call in-house sound. You bring in a separate sound system. And in doing so, it, it's actually a good thing, because, um, you can, you can tune that sound system and, and adjust the speakers in one way or another. Last year, we did actually, in fact, normally you have the speaker set at a wider, you know, wider range, uh, hanging from the stage. We actually pointed them in closer so that, that the, um, structure would absorb as much sound as possible. So, um, in doing so, like, to answer your question, we have a separate sound system. We don't use in-house sound.
And I, and I understand that. And I guess that some of the concerns I have now is how satisfied I was Sunday is now I have concerns because there's no control over this, other than, once it starts going, it's going to get, there's no, there's no limits right now. So there would have to be some sort of sound check, as the alderman had mentioned. You know, I don't, how, okay, let's say the concerts start at whatever time. When would, would you, when would you do a sound check to lock that in?
Absolutely. So we start loading in the festival, the stage will roll in on Wednesday. Uh, production will start going up on Thursday. I would say by Friday afternoon, uh, into the evening. Um, early evening, we could do a sound check, um, to set those levels. Um, and then obviously, the show is on Saturday. Um, in regards to the timing of the show, we've adjusted this year. We're going to open earlier. Um, our proposed time is, is 2 o'clock for V, uh, VIP guests and 2:30 for general admission guests with the show, with the, um, the first artist going on at 3:30. Our, our plan is to wrap up with the headliner on Saturday evening by 10:30. Um, and, um, on Sunday, since they're two separate shows, we're, uh, will be done on Sunday by 9:30 PM.
Okay, so Saturday, 10:30, hard stop.
Yeah, absolutely.
30 encore, third encore, Mike Atkins is up there doing some crazy stuff.
Van.
Okay, uh, Alderman Holfer.
Uh, two concerns. Last year, we were basically guaranteed that none of the sound would leave the bowl. And that was not the case. I live a little over a mile away to the south, and at one point, I went outside because my front living room window was shaking from the bass. So that's not, not leaving the bowl. So that's the history that we've got to work with. How do we tell the neighbors, you know, it's going to be different this time when they were promised the same thing last time and it didn't come to fruition?
Absolutely. I think that's a great question. Um, I, I do believe that, you know, our team is putting our best foot forward. We came into a new venue last year. Every venue's a little bit different. Um, so we're able to learn from our mistakes or learn from our shortcomings last year, make those adjustments. Um, I think, as mentioned, with changing the direction of the stage, that's going to do a tremendous favor to those in the opposite direction behind the, the stage area. Um, so, you know, we can do our best, um, absolutely do our best, and we can work, um, you know, hand-in-hand with those that are, that are concerned to, you know, put on what we think is a good show and a good opportunity for the community and for, for those interested. We, you know, there's a lot of, even after the struggles that we had last year, um, in year one, you know, I think it's something to be said that, you know, if you look at, um, the amount of people that want to come back and want us to make this right, and, and the positive comments that came from it, too.
In, in my younger day, I was a, excuse me, a drummer in a rock band, so I get it, you know, I like, I like the noise.
Awesome news. I never, I will revisit that about 100 times next year.
Still got the drums in the basement, so, anyway. My, my point is, is I get it, but for me, the ability to adjust immediately or within 20 minutes or whatever it took to get would be critical. Not some artist going, yeah, no, I ain't going to do that, I'm going to leave it just the way it is. That, we'd have to have that control.
So, absolutely. Our, our, um, production team, uh, fortunately, on, you know, it's Tacos, Tequila and Throwbacks, right? Is the name, is how we brand the festival. Um, you know, these artists don't come in with, um, production guys that, that are running their own audio and whatnot. There, it's a different genre of music. So our team is in control of the music. Um, we, we have, within a matter of minutes, we could have it turned down. Um, you know, everyone's on radios, everyone's got, you know, the ability to communicate. So, um, I think we could address those concerns immediately.
We had a great event this winter in, within Chant, and we had the same kind of situation and they were more than willing to, to work. And if we can make it as good as that, it would be terrific.
Yeah, I'm very familiar with that. Enchant was also in Kansas City, where we're based out of. Um, a wonderful event and a great event that brings the community together. And I think that our festivals offer the same thing. So our goal is to work hand-in-hand with everybody involved, to make sure that everybody is happy and understands what we're doing. Um, you know, this is not part of your question, but one thing that I'm very, very proud of within our, our organization, we've been doing these tacos and tequila festivals for the past four years in different, different municipalities, different markets all over the country. We've never had, at a single tacos and tequila festival, one arrest. We've never had, at a single tacos and tequila festival, a situation, um, that, uh, you know, would put our events in jeopardy. Here, we're talking about sound, things that are fixable. Um, but our team absolutely does the, the best that we possibly can to put our best foot forward to bring the community together, those that enjoy different genres of music and that like to have a good time. And we're not talking about kids. We're not talking about, um, those that are, you know, I mean, we're talking about adults that are 21-plus, predominantly 25 to 54-year-olds.
So how many years do you have this under contract?
Uh, I would actually have to have that conversation with, with, uh, Mike Zimmerman and, uh, Nick Nolan, the, the president of our, of our company.
My understanding is a multi-year thing.
Yeah, when we go-
See, if we have two bad years in a row, we're going to have a real issue.
Absolutely. And I, 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 I am, you know, our team is a resilient team. Um, we are focused on, on, uh, adjusting and getting better every single year. Last year, we left Franklin not feeling too good, to be honest with you. Felt like we had a couple of black eyes. Um, but we all, you know, kind of strap up our boots and we're like, how can we do this better? And how can we make sure that, you know, all, uh, concerns are addressed? And, um, you know, uh, one thing that I'm very proud of as well is every single individual that had a negative comment uh, on our social media pages, we gave them the opportunity to have a conversation with myself, with the owner of the company, um, that, just to let them talk. Um, and we had, you know, those were very, very, uh, productive conversations. So we, we hear everybody. We, we hear the concerns and we're adjusting as needed.
No, I got, I got caught, my last comment, I, I-
Because I just have to, I have to interject for a reason. I don't like this reason, but it's midnight. Now we have to do proceed, some procedural change here, as much as we don't like this.
Thank you, my brother.
Recording stopped.
Coming back. Something-
It almost stops at midnight because we only do this at-
Now we got to go back to the old screen with the target on it and some music while this-
Can we play Ludacris? The mayor said we have to stock in some musical star and I requested Ludacris.
You, you may come, you may sing. I think Ed now, Ed plays the drums. I love that. I just, I just, I'm going to get a lot of usage of that.
Yeah, we're talking-
Start a band.
The artist we're talking about is the face of progressive, all-state, State Farm. I mean, all these different, it, it's far worse.
Tacos, Tequila, the band guy goes, anybody know a drummer? Anybody know a drummer?
Here he comes.
He's out cutting his lawn a mile south. Well, sure.
I can drop a beat, yeah.
I'll drop a beat. That's awesome.
Somebody-
Bad for 70.
What's that? Steel Man.
Yeah.
Steel Man.
Oh, that makes sense now, doesn't it?
Exactly. Email drummer. All right, we are back. Look at this. Well done. Not even 12:01.
I'm just going to follow up, my last comment was, last year, I got the phone calls, I drove over there, I sat in the road, I listened. I don't want to do that again next year, so.
I hear you.
Take it on your word.
I have, I, I hear you. Absolutely.
Well, Alderman Day, then Alderman Barber, and then Alderman Ikman. I know, thank you.
So I just, I wanted to just kind of go back in time to some of the things we talked about at License Committee, just to kind of catch, um, people up that weren't there. Um, so, um, some of the questions that were asked, um, with regard to Enchant, one of the things that we had was a point of contact. And I did ask, um, the representatives here if we would have the same thing in this event. And, um, Mr. Atkins, um, agreed to be that contact for that piece. Um, there was discussion, um, our PD and fire department were both there, um, and had the opportunity to, to speak and answer questions. And, um, in both instances for police and fire, um, the representatives agreed that, um, last year was not staffed correctly and they were amicable to, um, changes to have better security, um, and, and more EMS personnel, um, on, on the field. So those, those were, those things were, were discussed. The two things that were still outstanding, um, from our meeting, um, earlier today, was this, uh, memo, I believe, um, the fire chief did send it to all the alders. This is familiar to everybody. Um, so they went over, um, the, uh, capacity limits. And based on their assessment of the way the field is shaped, as well as obstacles, um, that are on, in the field itself, um, their assessment of the attendance, um, the max attendance should be around 6,500, give or take, um, as opposed to the 10,000 that was asked for in the application. And, um, the fire chief did use the word requirement when he was speaking about it. So, um, that is something that, if it comes from the fire chief, I, I take that at, at face value, as something that we should, um, hold the, the-
I, 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 we had a conversation with the, with the fire chief and, and, um, you know, one thing that he, he notated also, the meeting had wrapped up, but he did not take into consideration the added egress and ingress, uh, points onto, onto and off of this, of the field. He, for, he didn't notice the, the ramp in center field, that is also an ADA ramp. He didn't, uh, take into consideration the ramp in right field that has recently been installed. Um, it was freshly installed last year. Um, also the added ingress and egress points that we're talking about, you know, proposing, um, around home plate as well. So he said that will dramatically, that changes that. We also addressed the, the, you know, the national average of square feet per person for live events and festivals. Uh, the national average or requirement in NFL stadiums, for, for example, like, say, a Taylor Swift concert or a Zach Bryan concert or something like that, Luke Combs concert. Um, you name the artist, it's seven and a half square feet per person. Um, we've seen everywhere from seven and a half square feet per person to an upwards of 10 to 12 feet, uh, square feet per person. You know, we're happy to meet you where, or meet him where he wants us to be, um, and, and make those adjustments in those areas. Um, so he, he was, because of what he thought was, uh, the proposed capacity, because of, without knowing the ramps, he put us at a 15 square foot per person. He's willing to renegotiate that. The company that does our site mapping, if you look at the map, um, there's a company called Brumgard. It's, it's the, um, they're a national, uh, event company that does Taylor Swift shows. They do all the massive Live Nation, AEG, all those shows. Um, it's not a company that, that doesn't know what they're doing, and they do this on a very, very large scale. We're trusting the professionals to put together a map and to advise us on the, and keep the safety and security of our guests in mind when they're setting those capacities. Um, so therefore, I just want to, you know, to speak to that in, in regards to, I, I, I think his number's going to, you know, increase to what we're proposing, or we're asking for.
Thank you for the update. I did not know that conversation occurred. Um, I will say that, that the, the size does still give me pause because it is a larger number than was anticipated last year, both in what was on the application and then the, the patron load that, um, was estimated to have come through. Um, and given, um, a lot of the, the construction issues and all of the major thoroughfares leading into this, which I'm not sure if you're even aware of that, um, leading into this venue, um, is going to create logistical traffic nightmares. So I do still have concerns about, about the size of this event reaching that, that level. Um, and then, um, finally, um, we talked a bit about, um, the cell signal. Um, and I don't know if Alderman Ikman was going to address that. Again, that was her point that she brought up about, um, you are going to talk about it?
However, we'll be skipping over Alderman Barber.
Right. Okay, yep, then I, then I will yield for you.
Thank you.
Yep. No, I would, I would just wanted to make sure she was, she wanted to address it, so I will yield for her.
All right, Alderman Barber?
So are you saying that you'll be willing to go with the new revised limit that the police chief comes up with?
Fire chief?
Fire chief. Absolutely.
So, given the, the ramps and everything, whatever number he is coming-
Yes, sir.
We could put that in at a later date?
Uh, yeah, absolutely. The, well, I mean, the, I guess the, the thing that we'd hopefully set that sooner than later is because tickets are on sale for this event, right? So I want to make sure that we don't oversell it. So the sooner the better that we hear back from the fire chief.
Fire chief.
Yeah, on that.
So it would be direct, could you move forward? I can't hear you, Mike.
It would be approval based on the contingency of that number?
Yes, sir.
At this point, as far as approvals or not?
Yes, sir.
Uh, the other thing I wanted to ask about was, I've attended many, 20 years' worth of Harley events across this country. And I know that the artists feed the crowd and the crowd will feed the artists, and it can take all kinds of dimensions and go in many different directions. So I want to know what you are doing in terms of policing the contracts with your artists that will give them limits and guidelines.
Absolutely. And, and, you know, we can ask. For example, you, you, um, you had mentioned the, um, the, the lyrics. I mean, we can make that ask to the artist, can you play an edited version of that song? We can make that ask, doesn't mean that they're going to do it. We're going to do our best as the producers of the event, uh, we're going to do our absolute best to make sure that, um, you know, everything, everybody's happy, um, and that no lines are crossed. Uh, one thing that I, I will speak to, though, in regards to that is, um, the fact that the, we're talking about 50-year-old, you know, throwback hip-hop artists. They've been around the block a time or two. They show up on time, they perform their set, and they leave. They don't hang out. They don't, you know, they don't, these, these guys are making a living, they've been around the block a time or two. If you were, I, I would encourage somebody from this council to go to the SZA show on, on that evening and come to the Tacos and Tequila Throwback Event and tell me the stark differences in the crowds and the, uh, attendees and, and the, you know, and how they're behaving. These are, you know, married families or married, uh, individuals, they're, they're soccer moms. They're people that are coming out to, have been around the block a time or two, really have their heyday of driving up and down Main Street, listening to their favorite song, and, um, you know, they just want to have a good, clean, safe time.
Could I, you still the floor, but I've got a clarification point.
Oh, you?
Okay, clarif, point of clarification. If we're looking at, Alderman Barber talked about this, about the fire chief giving input and approving this permit tonight contingent upon you willing to go with the, because the low end 65, so you're thinking somewhere between 65 and 10?
Yeah, we, our, our, as a, as a, as an organization, as this event, we do not want to go past 10,000.
Right, which is great.
Right.
Last year, the oversell was part of the problem.
So we, we, last year, we, um, there was a number of things that we could approve upon. Um, I think the, you know, ingress and egress points, the gate holdup and, and all of that made, it magnified smaller issues that turned into bigger issues. Um, last year, we didn't o, oversell the event per se. Um, I think the, because of the weather and the way people were moving about the venue and how they're conglomerated together, like their impacts, it made it look a lot worse than it really was.
I'll give you that, but let me go back to this point about the fire chief. So if it was going to be approved tonight and you're willing to go with the fire chief's recommendation, the recommendation's the recommendation. So if he says 7,800, you're good with sticking at the fire chief's recommendation because that way this thing can move forward?
Absol, I, I, I would ask, kindly ask to have a conversation with him about it and just see if, but yes, to answer your question, yes.
Could be in contact with him tomorrow.
Yeah.
If he didn't give you his contact information, I will get it to you.
Yeah. I would love to have a conver, this happens in every, in every market that we go to, right? We have a conversation with the fire chief. They, they've set it a, um, a capacity limit. We have a conversation and typically that, that capacity limit will flex in one way or the other, based on that conversation.
It's fair, but I'm just looking at, I know you've got to get this thing rolling and we do, too. So Alderman Barber, back to you, and then Alderman Ikman?
Thank you, Mayor. A few things that I wanted to touch on in licensing of changes that were made from last year to this year. One question that we had for the applicant was the restroom situation. As many of us recall, that was a problem last year. I was told that they've added 109 new porta-potties on top of what they had last year, as well as six additional handicap porta-potties with their original restroom trailer. That was a big concern, um, for some of the residents here, without getting into the grotesque details of what they witnessed last year. Um, the new ambulance EMS provider is larger, um, can provide better service. Our fire department, our fire chief seemed to be, um, content with that. That was another positive thing that came out of our License Committee meeting. Parking, of course, was brought up. There is going to be prepaid parking spots only sold, so there should not be a problem with that overflow parking. However, is a backup pa, plan, being the Alderman of the district adjoining D- However, is a backup plan being the Alderman of the district adjoining D6 across the street and D2 for clarification purposes. I'm going to be working with Mike Atkins and contacting local businesses such as in the Franklin Village, Point After, River, Pick 'n Save, this goes on and on in my district of where some of that overflow parking was, so that those private business owners can put up no parking signs. It's a project that Mike Atkins and I will be meeting to discuss. The new security system that they're implementing this year highly impressed me. It's a security system that TSA uses instead of just the winding of people to see if they've got weapons and so forth on them. It's the same security system that's used at the airport. The contact phone number, which was mentioned earlier. And I will end and leave this open to more questions after, I was quite vocal, loudly vocal, in license committee meeting discussing the lack of cellphone usage for those of us residents around that area. I understandably, whenever you attend a large concert venue, I know myself and I have in the past, you know, when you're in attendance, often you don't always get clear cellphone service, but I was discussing the outside attendance as far as my residents, the residents on Hawthorne, the large span of people leading into District 5 that did not have cellphone service, which is a council you've heard me mention several times after this event last year and so forth. So cellphone boosters, if that's the correct terminology, are being looked into, shopped around to see what can be done to resolve that issue. With that, I just wanted to cover some of the highlights that were missed in licensing when we met earlier. We met for a lengthy time. That was part of us starting the common council meeting at the, right at 6:30 on the dot. So we talked for about 45 minutes, at least, to an hour, so I appreciate the time at that. So I will yield right now to open the floor up to any additional questions that others may have.
Alderman Craig, then Alderman Day?
I just have a couple things that were touched on by other members of the council here. The attendance piece, Alderman Eichmann just kind of, you know, bringing up the idea of cows at the venue, cell on wheels sort of thing. One thing, going back to something that Alderman Holfer said that really, and that you kind answered as far as the question goes, kind of, kind of gives me pause, was when you mentioned on how the directional speak, the, last year, the speakers were directed to face each other, and that was to cut down on what would escape outside of the venue, correct?
Yes, yes.
And I'm old enough to remember, we were told last year, you know, got it figured out, the science says the directional speakers is going to fix the problem, it's not going to go anywhere, anyone that's going to hear it is only going to be having a ticket, and they're going to be on the field, and so they're the ones that are going to hear it. This isn't going to be a thing, right? And that wasn't the case. So I don't know if, like, you know, the angle was just off, it's when I play pool kind of thing, you know, I just don't get the right angles as far as that goes. But now, is that going to be the same thing again this year, or is there a different sort of, hey, we got a better system? You know, you mentioned you're doing this in seven markets. You know what? It works in Kansas City, it worked in San Antonio, we found it didn't work here, it didn't work as well as we thought in Chicago, but being, Chicago being Chicago, it wasn't as much of a disruption to people around your venue in Chicago. Like, what's going to be the fix as far as that goes?
A great question, and I can't speak to what was promised or said here last year. I was not in attendance last year, so I apologize for that if there was promises made and we didn't keep them. But what I can do is I can tonight say that we have definitely put our best foot forward to try to mitigate as much as possible those concerns. We have changed the direction of the stage. That does a massive, massive thing when it comes to how sound projects. We have changed it from bleeding potentially to an angle at the neighborhood to now facing in the complete opposite direction of the neighborhood. Everyone in the neighborhood is behind the speakers. So if we were to put a speaker on blast and, at a concert, and we were to stand behind it, it's not going to project as loud and it's not going to carry as far.
Okay.
Because it's projecting, like, the way audio waves, you know, travel, travel outward, and, you know, if you're behind it, it's not coming back towards you. So, you know, can you hear it? You might be able to hear it, but is it going to be what it was last year? It's going to be a huge improvement.
So today, May 8th, today, May 8th.
Good call.
We can say that, you can say, to what degree of confidence do you have that people on Hawthorne Lane that are directly adjacent to Ballpark Commons, that your confidence level that this isn't going to be a disruption to their Saturday?
That's a matter of perspective, I think, and they're open to their opinions, right? I can't promise that no one's going to complain because they have the opportunity to complain, or they're going to, you know, be upset because they have the opportunity to be upset. I think there's a number of different things that are playing into that, those feelings in that neighborhood. I can't speak towards the package as a whole. I can speak towards our event, and I can say that our event is doing its absolute best to address that, those concerns for our event, our events plural, the two nights out of the, you know, the year that we do these bigger concerts. So, you know, I can't promise you that no one's going to complain, or not going to complain, but I can say that if they are being fair and honest with themselves and the situation and how, hopefully, they're watching this, and they say, wow, these guys are really, you know, they're not trying to be mean, they're not trying to come in and disrupt, they're trying to put on an event that, by the way, sells out, has already sold out almost every hotel in the area on Saturday night and Sunday. So it's like, you know, it's putting on, there's great, there's a lot of positives here, not as many negatives besides the fact that until 10:30, there might be some ambient, there might be some noise. And, you know, on Sunday night until 9:30, there might be some noise. I hope that answers your question.
It does to a certain degree, but, you know, it is something of where, you know, it is an area of concern and, you know, where, to Alderman Barber's point of, okay, yes, if the speakers turned away from me, I'm not going to hear, it's not going to be, you know, where my ears are going to be ringing for the next three days, but it's still going to be projecting, I'm still going to be able to hear that, especially if it's lyrics that I find questionable for my daughter, for my son, or something of that nature, that it's, that it's not going to be a sanitized sort of version.
I hear you, and I think it's going to be a very, very, like, it's going to be an improvement, a big improvement. I think we need the, we need the chance and the opportunity to, you know, we're the type of, you know, entity that likes to crawl, walk, run. We're the type of entity that likes to continue to grow and to continue to get better in every event and every venue that we walk into. We'd like the chance to do our best again. Last year, we thought we were doing our best. We took, like I said, we walked out with some black guys, but we, I can tell you right now, we've worked around the clock, you know, for a year now, going on a year now, to make this better. And that's what we're, you know, we're bound and determined to do. We want you guys all to be happy, we want the community to be happy, and see the good in what we're doing.
Thank you.
Alderman Day?
Thank you. This will be, I think, my last kick at the can here. So we're talking a little bit about sound, as in the sound that we hear, but we hear a lot about the bass and that that is just as disruptive and in some cases more disruptive to people as far as, you know, rattling your house or just being difficult to sleep because even though they can be in their house and close the windows and whatnot, the bass still comes through. So what is being done to mitigate that?
Do you want to speak towards the bass?
I can get really technical. Are you the bass guy or the trouble guy?
Yeah. I think honestly, that question is for an audio engineer, right? There are certain pieces of equipment, I can tell you right now, like, we can speak to our production team and say, listen, you know, we need to set, make sure that we're not rattling the homes. We need to make sure that we're being good neighbors, and I think Mike Atkins can speak more towards the bass and how that works.
Yeah. You really do have to get right into this thing, don't you? You should probably have an audio guy look at that.
That costs money.
So there are technologies available to, you know, I'll get really technical for a second, but if you run two speakers out of phase with each other, it actually limits the distance that the sound waves will travel. So that's one technique that can be done to limit the projection, especially when it comes to bass, but I think in its simplest form, we employ the sound check technique that we've now talked about for the other, the other events within Ballpark Commons and employ that strategy for this as well. Set limits and proceed with that.
And then going back to the cell service piece for a moment. This is not exactly my recollection of how that conversation went a few hours ago. It seemed that you were pretty resistant to bringing in any sort of equipment, be it extra receivers or a tower or something. I mean, there was some, there was some conversation about what is and isn't allowed based on the PDD, but you made it seem as if it was cost prohibitive and that this wasn't an issue in other venues.
Yeah, so I can speak to that conversation to, you know, we, Elder Woman, sorry, I'm getting used to the terms.
That's okay.
Okay, ma'am, you had brought up the concern, and I heard you, and we hear you. That was a concern that was never once mentioned on any of our social media pages. It's something that I asked for simply the time to do more research on in regards to the cost of those units. I mean, if we reached out to, say, T-Mobile, Verizon, AT&amp;T, and asked for a cow, a cell tower on wheels, they were, ask us what the capacity of our festival or our event is, and if we tell them 8,000, they're going to laugh at us, and they're going to say, that's going to cost in upwards of $50,000 to $100,000. And then you're talking about having to do network-specific cows. At some point, it just becomes unrealistic to ask that. Now, if you compare this event to a multi-day music festival, Summer Fest, a NASCAR race, when you get 75,000-plus people there, then those start to make sense. One thing that I was actually, like, it was like a lightbulb moment after the meeting today, was when the police chief said, I think I know how we can address that issue with the cell tower. And I said, tell me more. He said, what if we put up signs and we put up a Wi-Fi network and encourage all the attendees to jump on the Wi-Fi network therefore they're not eating up cell service? We can't guarantee that they're going to do that, but I think that's a huge step in the right direction. Put up signs, jump on our Wi-Fi. Having trouble with cell service? Get on the Wi-Fi, and it frees up cell service. You know, it's at least us meeting in the middle somewhat to try to fix and mitigate the problem.
But does the Wi-Fi at Ballpark Commons have that capacity?
We could bring in additional Wi-Fi, we can bounce, we can amplify Wi-Fi, there's absolutely...
They do.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Fiber, yeah.
That's great.
Last year, we did not offer Wi-Fi for our attendees, but we can absolutely do that this year.
Yeah.
So the topic of cell on wheels, that actually came up when we did Enchant licensing, and ultimately, we employed a Wi-Fi solution for Enchant, and I don't know if anyone in any of your districts encountered any issues during the run of Enchant with cell service, but we did put a public Wi-Fi network out for Enchant, and we didn't even advertise that, we just let people, you know, they come in, they can log on to it if they want to, and that addressed the problem when we discussed this during Enchant.
And there were nights at Enchant that far exceeded the 6,500 people through the course of the entire day?
Yeah, I mean, there were never, during Enchant, there was never more than 4,000 people in the stadium at any given time, but we did have attendance days that had gotten over 9,000, so.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Barber, you've got the floor?
If you're first day, I mean, you're doing a lot of theoretical kind of things as far as I'm concerned, saying that you're doing this in hope that it's better, you're trying to make it better. What if it's not the first day? What are you prepared to do the second day to correct all that?
Immediately address those issues. What I loved about the event last year, you know, we worked, I mean, the police captain or chief was sitting right next to us, the dispatch was sitting next to us, fire was sitting next to us, and we were in constant communication. Dispatch said, oh, we have a noise complaint. Cool, let's address that immediately. That's what I love about the team that, you know, we, that we have here with the first responders and those that are working with us, the public departments on the event with us.
Last year, you reacted?
Last year, here?
Last year, the police chief and the dispatch was sitting in the press box next to me, officing, or officing with us, and if dispatch said, oh, there's a noise complaint, it was brought up directly to us.
Well, that's not going to work. It's after 12:30, sorry. So, all right, you still got the floor? Because we need to roll this around, it's 12:30 a.m., we really need to get going here.
I guess that's my only concern is, you know, are you going to be able to react quickly to the neighbors and keep this as an event that you want to maybe bring back next year?
Absolutely.
I don't know if you're going to get an approval next year.
All I can ask is for, you know, everyone to try to at least work together. It sounds to me like there's some ongoing issues outside of this event structure, and I can't speak to those issues with sound and other things, but yeah.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'd like to make the motion.
Motion to approve? Right?
Yes.
Is there a second? Oh, Mr. City Attorney.
What about?
Button, button. Benjamin Button.
What about the, that's akin to the other concert item? This is a concert, this is a concert item. Is that part of any motion here?
I'd like the motion to be amended to include that.
To include the sound check? Approval sound?
Same as the last concert item approval where it's subject to...
The concert series.
It's put over?
No.
No, we can't.
No more putting over. We've got to take action and get it done.
All right, well, you did it to the other one, maybe you want to reconsider that one?
Because this is not an independent sound system coming in. This is...
That's a whole different ballpark. No pun intended.
So are we, so you're saying we're going to approve this, but are we setting a decibel limit on this or setting an approved sound check?
I would do the sound check, and I would make sure that the mayor's there, Alderman from the district is there, that some residents are there, and you can gauge the feel for what's going to be workable.
I'm fine with that, if it moves it forward.
And you can take, if we agree, whoever's there agrees, and it's at this level at the lot line, and the police department knows this is what was agreed to. So if they get a complaint and the police come out with their sound meter and check it, or if they go through the...
They'll go through one line.
...other meter, we'll have a clear understanding of what's acceptable.
Is that your amended motion?
I didn't make the motion.
I'm looking at the show.
I will amend my motion if that gets it approved tonight.
It's the first, is there a second to this?
I would second.
We have a first and a second. Let's do a roll call, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman's son?
Aye.
Alderman Day?
No.
Alderman Barber?
No.
Alderman Craig?
No.
Three and three, mayor votes yes.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Let's handle vouchers and payroll quick before we go back into...
Reconsider fireworks?
Can you say it a little louder, sir? I didn't, is there...
Any reconsideration of the fireworks motion?
Yes.
Well, it can only be done if anybody voted opposite.
I asked for it to be rescinded and to have discussion on what was discussed in license committee meeting.
No, it was voted upon, in order for it to be reconsidered, just like the summer concert series, it has to, if somebody had voted against it, to vote to have it reconsideration.
I'm not.
And if nobody's willing to do that at this point...
I can't because I voted in favor of having...
I know you can't. I'm just looking, that's why I'm looking over here, and I'm not seeing anybody willing to vote to bring that back at this point. And I'm not seeing anybody willing to vote to bring that back at this point. City Attorney, any comments on that?
I have no idea why, since there was no discussion as to why the application was denied. I understand that it was going to be pursuant to all the same terms as previous years, and maybe there was one or two more events or something.
Same amount of events as last year.
Same events as last year? I have no idea why it was not approved.
With a hard stop at 10:00.
So. So if there's nobody willing to bring that back that voted against it, then it can't be brought back, correct?
Correct.
At this point, and we'll move on to item I as in Ida. Vouchers and payroll. Council actions requested motion approving the following. There's four points. City vouchers with any date of May 2nd, 2024, in the amount of $5,275,562.17. Payroll dated April 19th, 2024, in the amount of $506,720.51 in payments of the various payroll deductions, any amount of $501,737.72 plus city matching payments, and payroll dated May 3rd, 2024, in the amount of $463,087.24 in payments of the various payroll deductions in amount of $247,047,049 plus city matching payments, and point four. Estimated payroll dated May 17th, 2024, in the amount of $475,000 in payments of the various payroll deductions in the amount of $520,000 plus city matching payments. Is there a motion? So moved.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Craig?
Aye.
Alderman Barber?
Aye.
Alderman Day?
Aye.
Alderman Hassan?
Aye.
Alderman Eichmann?
Aye.
Aye. Six eyes, no no's. Motion carries. Going back to item. Regular Order of Business, item G as in George 18. A motion to enter closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 1985/1/1 for market comp, market competition and bargaining reasons to deliberate and consider terms relating to potential commercial industrial manufacturing residential developments and proposals and the investing of public funds and governmental actions in relation thereto and to affect such developments, including the terms and provisions of potential development agreements for, including but not limited to the properties at 9661-9745-9821 West Loomis Road, 9710-9760-9824 West St. Martin's Road, 9530 West Putes Road, 9355 West Brenwood Park Drive, and other properties surrounding the intersection of St. Martin's and Loomis Roads, and to reenter closed open session at the same place thereafter to act on such matters discussed therein as it deems appropriate. Is there a motion? So moved.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Real simple. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Should we go back to a roll call? Let's go back to a roll call. Sure, why not?
Alderman Holfer?
Aye.
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 Alderman Day?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, six eyes, no no's. Motion carries going into closed session. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Barber. Roll call, please.
Alderman Holfer?
Aye.
Alderman Eichmann?
No.
Alderman Hassan?
Aye.
Alderman Day?
Aye.
Alderman Barber?
Aye.
Alderman Craig?
Aye. Five eyes, one no. Motion carries. Moving forward to G19. A motion under closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 1985/1/1 for market competition and bargaining reasons to deliberate and consider terms relating to potential commercial industrial manufacturing developments, proposals, and the investing of public funds and governmental actions in relation thereto and to affect such developments, including the terms and provisions of potential development agreements for, including but not limited to the properties at 3303 West Oakwood Road, and to reenter open session at the same place thereafter to act on such matters discussed therein as it deems appropriate. Is there a motion? So moved.
Second.
First and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Craig?
Aye.
Alderman Barber?
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Hassan?
Aye.
Alderman Eichmann?
Aye.
Alderman.
Aye.
Six eyes, no no's. Motion carries. We're creeping into closed.
Recording stopped.
Marathons.
Recording in progress.
Green Lantern. Good morning. It's 1:11 a.m. We are back on an open session. Is there a motion on the floor? Mr. City Attorney, could you read that motion?
Potential motion would be a motion to direct staff to proceed as discussed in closed session.
We have a first.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Alderman Holfer, roll call, please.
Alderman Holfer?
Aye.
Alderman Eichmann?
No.
Alderman Hassan?
Yes.
Alderman Day?
Aye.
Alderman Barber?
Yes.
Alderman Craig?
Aye.
Five eyes, one no. Motion carries. G20. A motion under closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 1985/1/1 for competitive bargaining reasons to consider the potential acquisition of a portion of the property on, I need to typo, South 100th Street, tax key number 840-9984-0000. And on, is that right? I just think it's south, there's an O. Zero, South Lover's Lane Road? Got it. Tax key number 840-9982-003 for a permanent water main utility easement for the installation of a water main two and for the adjacent water tower park project and the service area in relation thereto, and the negotiating of the purchase and the investing of public funds with regard to the potential acquisition thereof and to reenter open session at the same place thereafter to act on such matters discussed therein as it deems appropriate. Is there a motion?
Motion to go into closed.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I just have it. All right, we'll do roll call again. Sure, why not? Roll call, please.
Alderman Craig?
Aye.
Alderman Barber?
Aye.
Alderman Day?
Aye.
Alderman Hassan?
Aye.
Alderman Eichmann?
Aye.
Alderman Holfer?
Aye.
Six eyes, no no's. Creeping into closed.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
First and second. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I just have it. Motion carries. G21. A motion under closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 1985/1/1 for competitive and bargaining reasons to consider potential acquisition of 30 feet reserved for public road purposes, property as described and set forth on certified survey map number 5913, recorded with the Monmouth County Register of Deeds on November 19th, 1993. Real 3166, image 1255 to 1259, included upon a portion of the property on 8050 South 100th Street, tax key number 019981001, for the adjacent water tower park project and across there too, and the negotiating of the purchases and the investing of public funds with regard to the potential acquisition thereof and to reenter open session at the same place thereafter to act on such matters discussed therein as it deems appropriate. So moved.
Second.
First and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Holfer?
Aye.
Alderman Eichmann?
Aye.
Alderman Hassan?
Aye.
Alderman Day?
Aye.
Alderman Barber?
Aye.
Alderman Craig?
Aye.
Six eyes, no no's. All again.
I make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Well, we're going to give the suggested motion for Mr. City Attorney.
Potential motion is a motion to direct staff to proceed as discussed in closed session.
I will move to approve that motion that City Attorney has threaded.
And who's the second?
I second.
Good. Let's see, alls in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I just have it. Motion carries. Going into G22. The only staff members should be here are them. What?
I'm moving on, Craig.
We'll do the break after we go into closed, okay? A motion under closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 1985/1/1 considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governing body has jurisdiction or exercise of responsibility. Wisconsin State Statute 1985/1/1 is in Frank concerning financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel, problems, comma, or the investigation of charges against specific persons except where par B, pair B applies, which if discussed in public would be likely to have a substantially adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations. And Wisconsin State Statute 1985/1/1 George conferring with legal counsel for the governmental